If I can have Natalie Olivares from the Advanced Learning Academy, are you here? If you are, please come forward and if you can all stand, she's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, she's not here.
She's not here? Okay, she's not here, so I'm just going to go ahead and lead us. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you can remain standing, Roger Aragon is here, our police chaplain, is going to give us our vocation.
Let us pray. Father in heaven, we thank you, Lord, for this evening as we gather on this Tuesday night for San Ana City Business. Lord, I ask, Lord, wisdom upon our mayor, our council members, Lord, leaders of the departments in the city of Santa Ana. We ask for wisdom, the direction for the city, guidance to make the right decisions, what's best for the community, the city, its people. Lord, I ask for blessing upon all those that are involved in department, protection upon our police officers, our fire departments, Lord, all those that work in the different departments. We thank you, Lord, that this is a great city, it's increasing being blessed of you. We thank you, Lord, that you're in the midst of us. We ask this in your precious name. Amen.
Thank you. You may be seated. Vex, why don't you take the lead on this competition? Because you have a lot to do with it. I'm not going to ask Mayor Pro Tem Vince Armiento to handle our next presentation. He's been very involved with it. It is a student ambassador competition. I believe it involves Santa Unified School District and Santa College, engages youth voters to increase civic participation. So let me turn it over to our Mayor Pro Tem Vince Armiento, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I am very, very excited about something. And excuse my throat, it's a little sore. I was in DC and it was raining the whole time. I forgot what rain looked like because we don't have enough of it out here. But I do want to say I'm very, very grateful for representatives from the college and from the school district that are here. I see our president of Rancho Santiago Community College, Claudia Alvarez, if you want to come and join us up here, Claudia. And as she makes her way up here, also, school board member, school board president, John Palacio, and Cecilia Iglesias, board member, if you guys want to come and join us. And we also have somebody who's the vice president of ASG at the college, not sure if Lisette Cervantes is here. So Lisette, come on up. And as you guys are making your way up here, you know, really, the brains behind this is our clerk of the council, Maria Juizar. So I'm going to just try to summarize a little bit of what we've been trying to do. And... Why don't we also have the civic engagement group come up with us and our youth commissioners? So the civic engagement interns are Dulce Saavedra, Belen Carrillo, Odalis Gomez, Brenda Velasco, youth commissioners Jennifer Barone, Roy Rodriguez, and Marlene Bouitron. So if all of you guys, the whole team is up here, they're the brains behind this, really. And, you know, it's funny because we talk about the student ambassador competition. What it's really about is the effort that, again, the clerk of the council, along with the city council, has taken on, which is to engage our residents and the public in voter participation. We realize that we have a city of, you know, close to 330,000, 340,000. The numbers look like of registered voters in the city, there's only about 93,000, 94,000. And of that, those who actually go out to the polls and vote and participate in the electoral process is about 50 to 55,000. Pretty low for 50 to 55,000 making decisions for an entire city. So we know we can improve those numbers. And I was really encouraged when we did something for the first time, which is, this is also for the first time, but we did immigration and naturalization fair to, excuse me, a citizenship fair and a naturalization fair where we had people for free, with the support of the city and other partners, be able to process their immigration or citizenship and naturalization papers. And we expected 300 people, 800 people showed up. So we realized that people are hungry to vote, especially in this cycle, and we think that this is something that a city should do. We're not telling you who to vote for, what you should vote for, we just want folks in our city to engage in the process because it is a privilege that a lot of people have struggled for on our behalf. And we realize that we have so many issues that affect us in this, in this great city and this region, that it's really important for us to be engaged in the process. So I'm very happy that our clerk took this on, but I'm even, you know, more grateful that we have partners that are working with us, like the students, you know, like, you know, these young faces, because those of us who've been through a few cycles of elections, our ideas get stale of how we encourage people to get out and vote. They've got a lot better ideas, you know, they talk about competitions and they talk about different ways of engaging young people. And that's what it is. Everybody talks about the millennial voters. Santa Ana has a median age of about 27.9, one of the youngest communities in the entire country. How do we get those people to, how do we inspire them? How do we ignite their excitement to want to get out and vote? Well, we need other young people to inspire them to do that. And we're looking to them to be leaders in this area. And so that's where the, sort of the genesis of this student ambassador competition came about. So I'm going to go ahead and allow the clerk to tell us a little bit more about that, or maybe actually one of our student reps. But before then, you know, I want to welcome, and hopefully they'll say a few words, our the president of the Rancho Santiago Community College District, trustee Claudia Alvarez, who was on the city council and knows how important voter registration is. And her demographic that she represents on campus, many young people who are already there, ready to vote, just aren't processed and just aren't registered. So to the extent that, you know, our partnership with the college is very important, as is our partnership with the school district, because that's sort of the short game, because, you know, we can get people registered and get them ready to vote. The long-term game is engaging intermediates, you know, students, students who are in junior high, who are 13, 14 years old, who may not be ready now, but for the next cycle they will. And we get them inspired, we get them excited, we get them engaged to vote, and that's a good thing. So Claudia, why don't you go ahead and say a few words on behalf of the college?
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tem Armiento. I tell you, I'm about 29, I am excited about this election, about 29. But we do want to make sure we reach out to our millennials, make sure that everybody actually voices their opinion. I'll tell you a story about four years ago exactly, I went and picked up my niece Isabella from school, and I wanted her to go vote with me. And she was all excited about the election because at school, they were talking to her about how important it was to go ahead and vote for president and all the different local elected officials or elected officials-to-be. And I took her to Subway right afterwards, and she was excited about the whole experience and talked about how at school they told her that she has a voice. And she was only nine at the time, nine. And she already is expressing her opinion, if you will, knowing that she has a voice. So that's the message we want to send to our youth. And as Mayor Pro Tem Armiento indicated, we may not have all the right ideas, if you will, we are of particular different age groups, but I think the message here is to make sure that everybody does come out and vote. And I'll tell you that our different colleges, at SEC and at Santa Ana College, of course, we are making sure not only that our students are registered, we have actually a movement at the college where it's up with voter registration, it's going to the different classrooms, making sure our students are registered, but also we have booths all over campus at every single event, reminding people the election's only 35 days away, who's counting, and that we have very, very important things at stake. So to the extent that we can make that happen amongst our youth, let us know what you think by showing up to the polls, filling out your absentee ballot if you have them, and making sure you express your opinion. So thank you so much to the seat of Santa Ana for partnering with us, Santa Ana College, of course, and Santa Ana Unified. John?
You know, elections are extremely important. In 1960, the President Kennedy was elected. The difference in his election was one vote per precinct in the United States, one vote. In the year 2000, the electoral college was decided by the United States Supreme Court. Elections are extremely important. I've been voting for over 40 years, and I know I don't look that old, but I have. And I've never missed an election in my life because I think it's that important. You know, everyone's vote does count. Getting involved, being part of joint community problem resolution is important. And part of that is participating in the electoral process. And I encourage our residents, especially our young, our youth, to vote. Because the only way you can make a difference is to actually get out and here, and vote. And I know that this election, in my judgment, will probably be the closest election probably in the history of the United States. And I'm talking about not just a popular vote, but in terms of the electoral college. And so everyone needs to come out, to be heard. I believe that if you don't go out and vote, you don't have a right to complain. Because the only way you can voice your concerns is to actually vote. I don't care who you vote for, but just go ahead and vote. And I think anytime we encourage our youth, and as part of this student ambassador competition, in particular our high school students and those who have, who are, who have graduated from our schools to get out and vote, I think it's important. Civic engagement is the only way in which we can make our communities much better. And so I encourage everyone to come out to vote and thank you, many thanks to the city for involving the school district as well. I have my colleague here, Ms. Iglesias.
I'm Cecilia Iglesias. What I wanted to say is just thank you for taking this on and for being involved because you are setting the example for the future voters. And, you know, it's one, it's an amazing opportunity and a partnership to have it with Santa Ana College and with Santiago Canyon, and also with the city of Santa Ana because we are going to be leading the way. When I heard about the initiative and the project that you guys have going, I was so, I was so thrilled to come over here and join my colleague, John Palacio, to see your faces when you guys received the recognition because you guys have done a lot, and I know you guys are going to continue doing a lot. And one thing I want to challenge you is, when I was doing voter registration about 12 years ago, one thing that I did do was to encourage the deaf and hard of hearing community to also come out and vote. So if any of you guys know sign language, I mean, that could be a project that you guys can take on. Or if you guys want something with the city, I mean, with the Santa Ana Unified School District, we have our interpreters too. And I know Santa Ana College has the deaf and hard of hearing program too, so. So thank you again to the leaders here, and thank you for all that you do. And like John, my colleague was saying, go ahead and make sure that you come out and vote because it's going to be very crucial. It's going to be one of the most important elections in our lifetime, so thank you again and congratulations for being part of it.
Thank you, Ceci. And so I'm going to let Dulce Saavedra speak a little bit about the student ambassador competition. But man, I'm looking at these, I'm looking at these prizes, iPad Air 2s, beat headphones, and gift cards valued at $250. Madam City Attorney, we can't apply, can we? Or either that, or we're aged out as well, right? So wait, some of us a lot, a lot, by a lot of years. So Dulce, why don't you go ahead and come and talk to us about the competition?
And I'm just going to introduce all of the people that are going to be leading this. So my name is Dulce Saavedra, and I'm a senior intern for the Youth Civic Engagement Project. And it happened because of all the people power that happened to pass a strategic plan that funded money for our local youth here in Santana to have some jobs. So I'm working directly with the youth commissioners, and I'm going to present them so they can share the awesome project that they're doing and how youth-friendly it is. I know that a lot of people shared that, how important it is to go out and vote, but they really, it really is a very interactive, fun way where we can just do it from your cellphone. So I'm going to let them speak.
Hi, so my name is Belen Carrillo, and I'm a senior youth civic engagement intern as well. And along with the youth commissioners, we focus on getting Santa Ana youth more civically engaged by doing various things as having a volunteer boot camp, or we have also worked with re-energizing the youth commission by helping them with their helmet drive where they gave away 1,000 helmets to Santa Ana youth, and promoting bike safety. Right now, we're working on the voter drive, so that's why we're really excited and helping out with this 30-day voter challenge. I'm going to pass it over to Odalis, and she's going to tell you a little bit more about specifics about the challenge itself.
Hello, my name is Odalis Gomez, and I'm a youth civic engagement intern. For us, it is really important to work with youth in this project because although we are working from ages 13 to 18, some are not yet eligible to vote because of their age, but this project is important to implanting the seed because hopefully with getting them involved and informed, they know that once they're 18, they have their right to exercise their vote. In our community specifically, it is important for youth to vote because they are the eyes, the ears, and of their parents as well. And if youth were more involved, politicians would, politicians would talk about topics that were, that affect youth directly. And I'm going to pass it over to Commissioner Marlene so she can speak on the topic.
Hi, my name is Marlene Bouitron, and I am the youth commissioner for Ward 3. And this project is a 30-day challenge called the Student Ambassador Challenge. And it's basically just to encourage the youth of Santa Ana to go out and vote, or encourage others to vote through social media. So they'll be able to use videos and photos, along with the hashtag, to promote this challenge, and they will be able to win a variety of prizes, ranging from their individual prizes to group prizes. So we just want the youth in Santa Ana to just go out and spread the word about the importance of voting. And I will hand it over to my colleague, Jennifer Barron.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Barron. I represent Ward 2. To participate in the Student Ambassador Challenge, students can record a video of themselves or snap a photo and share it through social media. They can also gain recognition at a city council meeting if we have the most voter registration participants. Now I will turn it over to my colleague, Roy.
Hi, my name is Roy Rodriguez. I am the regular mayor seat in the youth commission. I have taken initiative to be at the voter drive table at the Fourth of July Fair, where we outreach 83 people and registered 11. This challenge is easy as taking a selfie, telling people to vote, and getting the most likes on social medias. And I also would like to request if I could take a selfie with the commissioners for the thing?
Yeah.
Oh, and then this is the hashtags, S U S A Youth Vote.
Can we all just take a picture? That way we can upload it to the Santa Ana Youth Commission Instagram?
Let me wrap it up. And, because, we have one more? Come on, come on, come on up. We save the best for last. There we go.
Santa Ana College, woo!
All right, come on, the dons, the dons.
Good afternoon, everybody. I am Lisette Cervantes, ASG Vice President of Santa Ana College. This project is something that our school is looking forward to doing. We are more than delighted to be advocating voter, voting among millennials and youth because it is something that is very important, especially with this election that's coming up. It's one of the most important elections in our lifetime. And it's, so, we're waiting and we're hoping to get youth to vote more and more involved and aware of what is going on politically. And hopefully, you know, our advocating can have a good outcome and we can get students involved as, from Santa Ana College as well as Santa Ana High School. And, you know, hopefully we have a good turnout. Thank you.
Let's give everybody a big round of applause who spoke. Especially, especially those... So we're going to do a selfie here. We've got cameras out this way. I'm going to get mine ready because my 11-year-old taught me how to do this, so. But I just want to say thank you to our partners, thank you to civic engagement, our youth commissioners, our city council, who did this for the first time. We allocated money. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, for guiding us and allowing us to do this. We dedicate a lot of money, there's money out there, but we need a lot more. We need to register everybody we can, so everybody get out and vote. The deadline is the 24th of October. Make sure you submit your paperwork before then. Let's take a selfie. John? Get ready, be at the ready. One, two, three.
And I think they wanted to take one over here.
All right, there we go.
Good job.
Hey, did you see that picture in the 5K? You and me are right there when we start in the race.
We started good.
If I can have Debbie Knight step forward at this time, please? Just come around here. As she approaches, let me just tell you, she's been a wonderful member here of the city family for 25 years. And it's my privilege to present this to her and tell you that Debbie, you won't stand right here. Debbie graduated from Cal Poly Pomona with a Bachelor of Science degree in computer science. After a few years in the private sector, she came to Santa Ana in 1991 as a computer programmer. She was assigned to work on the human resources and payroll system. And you got it straightened out, right?
Oh, yeah.
She got it straightened out. And she worked on that system ever since, it says.
Tomorrow's payday.
Tomorrow's payday, by the way. Over the years, she's expanded her responsibilities to other system and works with city employees in all departments. She enjoys helping them solve computer and system problems and providing helpful tools. Over the course of her career, she's been promoted a number of times and is now the Principal Programmer Analyst. She avoids the spotlight, and here she is right now in the spotlight, the only dime in 25 years. And she stays primarily behind the scenes, loves spending time in the basement. No, it doesn't say that. But do you go down to the basement?
I was in the basement for eight years.
They put you in the basement for eight years? Wow. So that, you remember the basement.
And then I moved up.
And then you moved up. Where are you now? Second floor. It's better than the basement, I'm sure. She prefers to pursue technical activities rather than management. So, you know, she's behind the scenes, making everything work, doesn't need the credit, but she deserves the credit. She's doing great work. It says from 1994 to 1998, she was Information Services Employee of the Year, and she was recognized for her success in moving the payroll timekeeping process from a paper process to an online process. In the year 2000, she was the Exceptional Quality Service Recognition for her efforts in addressing, remember the Y2K for you guys that were around? When the year 2000 was going to come, everything was going to fail. And, and, and it would have, but, you know, but folks like Debbie, they kept it together and made it work. And then from 2007 to 2014, she's been active in Toastmasters, and she's been winning speech contests. So you're coming out now?
Yeah.
A little bit, she says. Her recent accomplishments include leading a project and moving paper paycheck stubs to online self-service pay stubs, establishing employee parking assignment database, and providing technical support to the new self-service benefits open enrollment program. Debbie emigrated here from the island of Java in Indonesia when she was still in high school. She worked hard to learn English, and she worked part-time, and she earned a college degree. She's been married for 27 years to her husband Mitchell. Is he here? He's there taking the photographs. Thank you, Mitchell, for your support. And it says that you guys enjoy traveling. Have you been back to Java? You've gone there too? How come you don't take them back to your home island?
Too busy working.
You're too busy working? Well, we'll have to have the city manager give you a break or something. It says that you love reading, swimming, snorkeling, and vacationing on tropical islands. Does Mitchell get to go on those?
Hawaii.
Hawaii. All right. It also says that you're an excellent cook, and you create your own recipes. And through your computer skills, you've gone online, and that you have a worldwide following of community and friends and coworkers that like your recipes. That's all true? Do you want to say anything else?
No.
She says no? Look, it's 25 years, and I don't know, but I know like it, you know, 10 years, it's bigger, and at 15, it gets smaller, and at 20, it's small, and 25, it's really little. But it's probably better what's inside. I hope so, too. But thank you for your fine work and your beautiful spirit and what you do for the city. Thank you very much. Now I will leave Mayor Pro Tem. Are you next? Let me reintroduce Mayor Pro Tem Vince Armiento.
And I've asked Councilwoman Meskwa to join me on this because she was on the Fire Authority for much longer than I was, and so I'm just going to talk a little bit about the issue. And we have our chief here, Chief Anderson, who's going to talk to us a little bit more about Fire Prevention Week. But this proclamation is really special. These first responders, and I'm really honored to have the chief here, and my short time on the Fire Authority has been very interesting. I've, you know, garnered just a new appreciation for these first responders and what they do. They, you know, unfortunately, we had a firefighter lose his life recently, and so, not from our authority, but in another county, I believe it was in LA County. But when, you know, one of our, you know, fire family loses their life, it is something that's very close to, to the rank and file. And so I've just grown really grateful for the work that they do. And when we went with the Fire Authority and lost the city's department, we thought there was going to be a real shift, a real problem, response times were going to be impacted, you know, service delivery was going to become a problem. It's been a very seamless transition. So I want to thank you, chief, and I want to thank everybody at the authority for really providing great service, great quality. Our department did a great job, and I don't think we've missed a step. So that's a really good thing. And these first responders, just so you know, they go to danger. When they see a fire, when they see something bad happening, they go towards it as we're running away as civilians. So, you know, they don't think about race, gender, economic status. They go into anybody's home, any commercial business that's, you know, that's in danger. And so that's why us first responders go. I think when you ask children, which are the most honest and innocent people, you can ask, what do you want to be when you grow up? You know, many of them, nine out of 10, say, I want to be a fire person, you know? And so that goes to the, not just innocence, but it is a simple truth that, you know, these first responders really do put their lives on the line and really do an excellent job. So I just want to say, what we're talking about this week or more, the alarms, right? The smoke alarms that are so important. And, you know, just a plug for them, I live in a 19, 29-year-old home, and it was built in 1929. The Fire Department right across the street from us saved our home. So, you know, before we bought it, it, you know, it remains as a historic landmark thanks to the, you know, valiant work that was done by, I believe it was Station 2 at that time, which is now 72, right? So, so this is the theme, this year's theme for Fire Prevention Week. Quote, "Don't wait, check the date, replace smoke alarms every 10 years." And smoke alarms work. Smoke alarms save lives. So please, please, you know, check those. I know sometimes they're a nuisance because we're cooking and sometimes they go off, but that's a small price to pay for when your children are asleep, you're asleep, something happens, and they go off. You know, it does, it does warn us and it gives us enough time to get out. But we're all... But we're all encouraged to change out our smoke alarms, make sure that they're operating. And it really does cut the risk of dying in half, you know? Because without these smoke alarms, I mean, there's just very, you know, sometimes there's just no time to detect what's going on. So I want to go ahead and turn it over to my colleague, Councilmember Mesqua, who I know was on the Authority for much longer than I was and also has an appreciation for everything that our firefighters do. Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Vincenzo. As he mentioned, I did have the honor and privilege to serve on the Fire Authority for quite, I think it was close to three years. And then prior to that, I was also the alternate. And during that time, I did get to see how these first responders are so committed and dedicated to their work. And it's admirable, the work they do. And this proclamation we're presenting today is very important because prevention in our communities is a big factor in saving lives. So before we present the proclamation, we're going to let Chief Anderson say a few words.
Thank you very much. What an amazing introduction. And I'd like to do this every week with that. As stated, this is National Fire Prevention Week, and our focus is smoke alarms. Every home needs a working smoke alarm. Having a working smoke alarm in your home reduces the risk of dying in a residential fire by nearly half. So you need to test the fire alarm, the smoke alarms. You need to know what to do if they activate and have a plan to get your family out. It's been our observation that many homes inside the city of Santa Ana do not have functioning smoke alarms. So I encourage you all to go home tonight and test them. If you do not have a smoke alarm and you cannot afford one, we will come out and install one free of charge. So you just need to call this phone number to the Fire Authority at seven-one-four-five-six-seven-three-two-three-four. And we have an admin assistant who will answer the phone. She also is bilingual. And she will come out and, she will make arrangements for a fire engine to come out and install a smoke alarm free of charge. And this is through a partnership of the American Red Cross, the gracious support of the city of Santa Ana, and the Orange County Fire Authority. And in closing, there are brochures in the back which tell you about smoke alarms, how to check them, how to get them installed. With that, thank you.
Thank you, chief. And so I'm going to do this in Spanish, right? Just so we can make sure that our listeners and our viewers get this right. But I want to get the number right, and that's why I wore my glasses. Did you say three-two-three-four or three-two-three-six?
Three-two-three-six.
Got it, got it. Okay, I might have misheard or whatever the case is, we'll get it right in English. So the number is seven-one-four-five-six-seven-three-two-three-six. So let me do it in Spanish. So let me do the proclamation in Spanish. So did you hear, did you understand me, chief?
A poquito.
Okay, there we go. We're working on it. We're working on it. So please receive this proclamation on our behalf, chief, on behalf of the city for Fire Prevention, National Fire Prevention Week, on behalf of all of us. And again, the theme is, did you have anything to do with this theme? Did you word it or did some? Okay, it's done at the national, all right. So, "Don't wait. Check the date. Replace smoke alarms every ten years." So that means even if we have them, that's not, end of story, we have to check and make sure that they work. So, chief, here's the proclamation on behalf of all of us. Thank you for the fantastic job you do. Please give our best at the Authority.
Thank you very much.
Gracias.
Councilmember Mesqua, I believe you have the next presentation.
I do, thank you, mayor. If I can please have my board members and commissioners make their way up here. Today, I'm going to be recognizing my board members and commissioners for their service. The term of my commissioners that I appointed will end on December thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen. And our city encourages its residents to become involved in their community. One way to do so is to serve in advisory capacity on one of the city's various boards and commissions. The city accepts applications on an ongoing basis, which stays active for a two-year period. But many of them have served longer than that. And some of them have served on more than one committee or board. So I really do, before I pass out your certificates of recognition, I do want to tell you I am so grateful and so proud of the work you've done on your respective commissions and boards. And I truly appreciate all the dedication you've put into serving. Before I present the certificates, if any of you would like to say a few words about your experience or maybe encourage our residents to become involved, please feel free to come up and say a few words.
Thank you. First and foremost, I want to thank Councilwoman Mesqua for the recognition and also for recommending me to be on the commission. If it wasn't for her recommendation and the approval of the city council a couple of years ago, I would not have known the ins and outs of the city. I've become familiar with the processes that go on here in Santa Ana. But more than anything, it's been fun to sit on a commission that provides a great service to the community, Parks and Recreation. And when I had a meeting with Eduardo Moet, the director of Parks and Rec, when I first was appointed, he said, "You're on the most fun commission that you could be on." And I think he was right. I've been to several ribbon-cutting ceremonies. And because of the leadership of the city council, city manager, I've been able to attend along with my sons, Julian and Jesse, who are sitting here today, to, been to a lot of events where it's been great to see the hard work that has gone into these events, from Fiesta Patrias to the Fourth of July celebration, to the Ocelot exhibit opening at the Santa Zoo. So again, I can't thank Councilwoman Mesqua enough for recommending me for this commission. And I do encourage all of you to look into joining some of these commissions. And I think right now, Parks and Rec, we have two vacancies. I believe it's four, six and four. So, yeah, we need more people on the commission. So, thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to, this is Bruce Bauer. I am honored to serve on the Planning Commission Vice Chair. And I've also been honored to serve also on the Parks and Rec Commission and the Historic Resource Commission. I want to thank Councilmember Angie Mesqua for her service to the city. She's served honorably. And I did not know the council member before. Actually, I served on the commission. Ironically, her husband went to law school with my twin brothers out there taking pictures for me right now. But, so I got to know her, and I'm very honored and very, it's a real distinct honor for me to have met you and a pleasure to have gotten to know you over time. And I encourage our residents to serve on these commissions. You can reach out, as I did, to the council member when they're elected, and you can apply to many of these commissions. And it's the best way I know of to really get to know the community. You get to meet, serve on these commissions, and it's actually just a minimal amount of time to serve on these commissions. On Planning Commission, for example, it's two times out of the month. So if you have the opportunity, I would strongly encourage you to avail yourself of that opportunity. And again, thank you very much for all your service.
Anybody else?
Good evening, everybody. First of all, I'd like to thank Angie Mesqua to finally, after being a resident of Santa Ana for more than thirty years and knowing John for as many years as those, to take the decision that, you know, things change. And it takes more than, you know, just being a spectator. We have to be a player. We have to get into the arena, you know? We have to look at Santa Ana and we look at it. And, you know, it's going to be more than just looking at things go by. We have to take a position. And we have to step up. And we have to say, you know, we want a better community, we better make a better community. And we have to take our education, our years of experience and our experience, and make something of that. Otherwise, we can't complain. We can't say mush if we don't take that position. And a commission opens that opportunity. It opens the opportunity to make a change. It also opens an opportunity for individuals to take leadership roles. Because in our community, if we don't prepare our leaders, our future leaders, to take positions, as commissioners, let's say, or any position, how do you expect them to take a higher position? We have to start somewhere. We have to train ourselves and we have to train our minds to become the next powerful position, the next elected mayor, the next elected president. We have to start somewhere. And this is a great position and a great opportunity. And I thank Angie for finally bringing me out and saying, you know, maybe it was my time, and here I am. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. So I would like to present these certificates of recognition. First of all, for, to Bruce Bauer, for serving on the Planning Commissioner, as a Planning Commissioner, and recognition to his commitment and dedication to the city's Planning Commission. Thank you. Thank you. Next, I have Marlene Witron, and she was my youth commissioner. Thank you, Marlene. Frank J. Gutierrez, in recognition to serving on the City Arts and Culture Commission. Jose Luis Tapia for serving on the Parks and Rec Commission. Mike Tardif for serving on the Historic Resources Commission. Dennis Wu Tan for serving on the Personnel Board. Once again, on behalf of the mayor and all of us, thank you very much for your service and dedication. We really appreciate it.
Councilwoman Martinez, I believe you are next. And if I can have folks from Santa Ana Building Healthy Communities join her for the presentation.
Good evening. As they come up here, it's a great pleasure to really bring the Building Healthy Communities. I think the last time they were up here was several years ago. As we all know, and if you don't know, Santa Ana was chosen as one of the ten cities by the California Endowment to make an investment in health and community organizations, to really transform a community. And, you know, we, I think, are now on our sixth year, yes, so in seis años, Building Healthy Communities, six years. And she had going on seven, the amazing work that has been done. And not too long ago, the Orange County Register wrote an article about some of the efforts that they are not just doing, whether it is being out there, engaging with the community, making changes within, with the city of Santa Ana and making policy changes, whether it's with housing, immigration, land use, zoning, you know, transparency, accountability. They've actually have taken upon themselves to also move forward and become entrepreneurs, learning a trade about art or community gardens and learning how to be self-sufficient. And that's what is amazing, that here we are, six, going on seven years. These residents and hundreds of them across this city, along with the nonprofit organizations, have made a significant impact. That what we see in the city of Santa Ana these past seven years and the policies that we have made here, it's not by accident. It's these folks that have been trained, that have learned tools of how to engage with the community, how to engage with city hall policymakers, on how they want to shape their environment from a healthy perspective. And so it's with great pride to be up here, to recognize them and all their hard works. I do see Anna, I can never pronounce her last name, Ortsuya, so I have to, you know, think about it, Alcalaz, and her efforts. And I know she's taken a leave of absence, but I wanted to thank her because these past couple of years, she's really been the leader in the forefront, pushing our community, pushing these groups, to really move us forward in a new direction. And so Anna, I just wanted to thank you for your efforts and really always being connected with us. And so I know I've worked very closely with them over the years. And I look forward to continuing as we move forward and we ramp up, you know, on seven years. And then, you know, going to be wrapping up soon, you know, ten years comes by very quickly. And so the amount of work that they have done, I would like for some of them to highlight and share some of the work that they've been doing because I know they have committees. And within these committees, they have made, as I mentioned previously, significant progress that we should all be proud of. When we talk about community engagement, community engagement would not be at the level it is today if it wasn't for Building Healthy Communities. We would not have had the policies that have been approved on this city council if it wasn't for these kinds of residents advocating for affordable housing, advocating for open space. It's always great for us as elected officials to take credit, but we do have to give credit where credit is due, that when a community comes together and starts to challenge the status quo and starts asking to be involved and engage in a process, and they come along, and we may not all agree, and there have been times where we've been on the opposite side, whether it been on the affordable housing issue, you know, we were not on the same page. But we came together eventually to making sure that we put the community first. And that's what's really important about what the California Endowment has been able to do with the Building Healthy Communities. And so with that, I see that, and I'm not sure who's, I see Nancy here, I see various of the folks that have been really tremendous leaders. Who's going to want to come and talk about some of the work that they have been doing? You know, because I can go on and on because I'm extremely proud, very close to this, you know, because I was part of the initiation and very excited about all the work that they have been doing. But I wanted to recognize them because I think it's important as we move into really ten years, as I say, it's coming very quickly, what are the next steps for them? And continuing to make sure that things are sustainable here with the city and with the community. So I would like, is it going to be Araceli? Araceli, please join us and give some comments.
Gracias. Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Araceli Robles. Yo soy parte de la iniciativa de Building Healthy Community. Junto con todos mis compañeros han sido siete años de lucha, siete años de logros que hemos podido lograr trabajar con la ciudad más unidas para poder construir una comunidad más saludable. Nuestra meta en nuestra- construir una comunidad más saludable. Nuestra meta y nuestra misión y visión es que en el 2020 nuestras queridas ciudades Santana sean más saludables en todos los aspectos. Por eso ahorita como menciona la concejal Martinez, estamos trabajando en todo lo que nos importa, la vivienda, las economías alternativas, los jardines comunitarios, porque si empoderamos a la comunidad vamos a empoderar toda la ciudad. Este es un momento muy histórico, de verdad, porque hace siete años estuvimos trabajando para entregar un plan estratégico al endowment y son cinco años que lo hemos implementado con mucho, mucho esfuerzo, de verdad, de mucha gente que estamos ahorita aquí, todas las organizaciones, todos nuestros compañeros, todos los jóvenes que estamos trabajando en los diferentes grupos ahorita, son justicia restaurativa, salud para todos y equidad para todos. Y tenemos diferentes campañas porque la idea es cambiar pólizas porque las pólizas aseguran que los cambios realmente lleguen a toda la comunidad y beneficien a todos. Yo me siento muy orgullosa de ser parte de esta iniciativa, de verla nacer porque fui parte de construir ese plan estratégico, fui parte de construir los estatutos, fui parte del comité directivo y yo siempre he dicho, este no es un proyecto más, es un proyecto de vida porque ha transformado mi vida y la de toda la comunidad que hemos estado aquí. Y gracias a todos los miembros del concilio y les decimos que nosotros estamos aquí para trabajar con ustedes y no nos vamos a rendir. Vamos a seguir cambiando pólizas en nuestra ciudad de Santana para asegurar el futuro para todos nosotros, nuestros hijos, nuestros nietos. Y realmente gracias a todos. Y los invitamos. Son bienvenidos dentro de esta iniciativa. Están pasando cosas maravillosas que se deben de entregar con nosotros. Gracias.
Gracias, Araceli. I don't know where our translator's at, but I certainly can translate that. So Nancy, very briefly.
So I'm not, I'm not gonna translate everything that she said, but in general, we want to give thanks on behalf of Santana Building Healthy Communities. And we have been working at this. We're on year five going on year six. So we do have one more year than was said earlier, but we have been working on really getting more residents to participate in the decisions that are made that affect their health, right, in their neighborhood. And that includes access to quality affordable housing, access to fresh fruits and vegetables, access to open spaces, access to restorative justice programs. And so, as Araceli mentioned, we have three main groups right now that are working on making sure that we have better health for all. So that those are, what kind of policies are we approving and also looking at alternatives to improve quality of life. So it's health for all, it's restorative justice for all, and also equity for all. So looking at how we can make Santana better for our kids, for our families, and for the future of Santana. And I also want to give a chance for a couple of other families to speak.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Dolores Almaraz y soy residente de aquí de Santana, California. Y me da mucha alegría y con mucho orgullo vengo aquí con mis compañeros para recibir este premio y este certificado. Pero yo creo que como madre y como residente de esta comunidad, yo creo que nos hace falta todavía mucho más trabajo que nos apoyan ustedes concejales porque la lucha pues sigue, continúa. Necesitamos pasar más pólizas, necesitamos más áreas verdes para esos adolescentes, más áreas de recreación. Necesitamos apoyos porque queremos menos delincuencia, una segunda oportunidad para esos jóvenes con una justicia restaurativa, para que haya más graduados y menos delincuentes en las calles. Queremos que también nos apoyen para que todos esos niños, que les den una segunda oportunidad porque también de ellos es, son parte de esta ciudad. Y entonces, necesitamos seguir trabajando en equipo para que colaboren con nosotros. Todavía quedan cuatro años más del endowment, pero yo tengo fe en Dios que esto puede seguir avanzando, no solo cuatro años, y junto con los residentes, nuestro equipo y ustedes podemos hacer la diferencia para ser de Santana, un Santana mucho mejor y que siga brillando. Gracias por su apoyo. Gracias mucha.
Hi, I am Dolores. And I have been participating with my family and it's really important that we continue to work together, council members. And we have already made a lot of progress, but we still have a lot that we can continue to do together. And making sure that we have improved safety, safer neighborhoods, so that our kids have opportunities and are not ending up in situations of criminality, but actually have more opportunities through restorative justice practices. And I think that sums it up.
Thank you. If no one else, you know, so as I mentioned earlier, you know, not too long ago, the Orange County Register did a write-up on the work that they were doing, which is, you know, running cooperatives. And I think many of us are probably familiar with cooperatives. And so, it's with great pride to know that here in the city of Santana, we actually have mothers, sisters, grandmothers doing cooperatives. And so, it's called Tierra y Dignidad, which is land and dignity, and Manos Unidas Creando Arte, United Hands Creating Art. Both groups are vendors that conduct business in El Centro Culturado de México in Santa Ana. And so, beyond just the public health and connecting with city to engage with policies, they've taken it a step further. They're doing cooperatives. And I'm a huge supporter of cooperatives. I believe that at the end of the day, you know, when you look at our democracy, you're able to get small business, but you're also able to get entrepreneurs or just local residents who are willing to become self-sufficient and have talent and are able to work together to sell things so that they can, you know, really move forward up in the economic ladder. That is so important here in this community. And this is what these residents are doing. And so, I wanted to acknowledge that work that they're doing, you know, today, but also the past six years. And so, I would just end with this, that those that have been touched by Building Healthy Communities and the work that has been done, you know, I can personally say that I would not be the policymaker that I am today if the California Endowment would not have come to the city of Santana and they would not have built a Building Healthy Communities. I was once a newly elected official and I heard of the California Endowment for the first time and they had chosen Santa Ana and I participated in a cohort with Naleo on learning about what it is to have a healthy community and how can residents participate and engage. So I learned there with Naleo and thirty-two other elected officials across Southern California and then to come and really engage with the community to implement policies. That's rare. And so, you don't see this happening in other communities. And that's why it's so important for us as city government to continue to support residents who want to be engaged in the process. And more importantly, we all know that in this city, we face type-two diabetes, high blood pressure, people that are losing their eyesight every day because they don't have access to healthcare. And they don't realize that they're diabetic. But you have groups like this and others like Latino Health Access who have continued to, through the Promotoris Program, to help teach our residents and provide tools necessary to help them. You know, there's a phrase that we've all heard, "Tell me the zip code that you live in and I will tell you your life expectancy." And I tell you that in the zip code 92701, if you look at the health indicators of Orange County, they're not very good. The life expectancy in comparison to 92701, to a Newport Beach zip code, it's pretty stark, pretty devastating. And so, the work that they are doing and continuing to help the city move forward to building a healthy community is important and we could only do it in partnership. So thank you all so very much for your work. So I'm not sure who I'm going to present this to, to everybody. So, we want to provide a certificate of recognition to the Santa Ana Building Healthy Communities in recognition of your commitment in addressing health and equities and improving opportunities to create a healthy, thriving Santana. Congratulations. Gracias a ustedes. Gracias. Thank you guys. Yeah, sure. Yeah.
Hello, everyone. My name is Cole Casares. I'm a staff member with Santa Ana Building Healthy Communities. And I just want to thank all the hundreds of youth and residents and organizers who have worked tremendously over the years, over the past six years, to create a plan that is gonna create opportunities for our future generations and is gonna take us out of that stigma where our zip code is gonna determine how much, how long we're gonna live, you know? With all this resident advocacy, all this youth leadership that we are creating, we're gonna continue challenging the system and hold them accountable for transparency. So it is the work that our residents are leading, together with the youth, like Dulce, who's here too, you know, she started from the beginning, that we're gonna make changes. So I welcome everybody to also join us and let's build a healthy Santana for everybody.
As you noticed, Dulce was up here earlier. She's back at it again. She's engaged and involved, you know, from voter engagement all the way to, you know, community gardens. And that's the kind of youth that we are really raising in this new 21st century. And so, congratulations to all of you. Great. Thank you. No? Quieren fotos? Son bienvenidos. So we love these residents. They'll call us out any moment in time. They hold us accountable. Gotta love them. Next, I would like to bring up the Blinking Owl Distillery. So if we have Brian Christensen here, Brian, please join us. If you have other folks from the Blinking Owl, it'd be fantastic. And so, I have not yet had the chance to come and visit you all, but I heard, well, I saw on Facebook that my colleague, Councilman Benavides, was there over the weekend with his lovely wife. But I wanted, you know, when we talk about public health, we're very supportive of thriving businesses and wanting to make sure that we have balance. And so, you know, it's with great excitement, you know, to really recognize you all here today. And, you know, we don't always, can't bring up because we have businesses opening up every single day, but I think this is a special occasion to recognize the Blinking Owl Distillery because they are the first distillery in Orange County. And so, they're making news. And I'll tell you that my colleague, he's a council member in Ventura, he's like, "Hey, are you gonna be at the League of Cities? If so, can you get me, can you stop at the Blinking Owl and pick me something up?" I was like, "Oh, my God, I'm getting deliveries already." So even from Ventura. And that was just done the other day. I was like, "Well, if I have time, I'll stop by, but if not, you're not gonna get anything." But, you know, you know, I want to go in, but it's a great history and I want you all to share it because I don't want to take your glory in what you all are doing. It's fantastic. Extremely proud. They're certainly in my ward and ward two. And, you know, I'm hoping that as we build relationships with the neighbors and yourselves there, how can we move forward and create these synergies? Because at the end of the day, we all know that the reason why, you know, cities are successful and counties are successful is that when we have a thriving economy, we have small businesses, they're really the backbone of our communities. And so, we need to make sure that we don't only invest in our families and our children, but we also have to make investments in our business community and support them so that they can thrive, so that the city can be successful as well. So with that, before I go into something, I just really would like for you all to share with us why you decided to come into Santa Ana, kind of the history, and then I'll make a couple of comments.
Hi. Thanks. Well, it is very exciting for us. We're Orange County's first craft distillery. We've been long-term residents of Santa Ana. And when we came up with this idea to do a craft distillery, for several reasons, we said we have to do it in Santa Ana. It's the perfect place for it. So with that said, I would like to thank the support of the mayor, city council, planning commission, all the staff in the city who really helped us get this project up and off the ground. It was inspired by a bar that used to be in Santa Ana that an old friend and Santa Ana resident, Gil Marrero, used to tell me about all the time, called the Blinking Owl Bar, that was at Third and Birch Street. So we decided to revive it as a new business, which is a grain-to-glass distillery where we make distilled spirits. And we try to highlight award-winning Santa Ana water and California grains. So, and our flavored Orange County orange vodka where our oranges come from the O.C. Heritage Museum here in Santa Ana. So, we try to keep it as local as possible. Yeah, so, anything to add to that? Drink locally. Yes, take Uber. We're close to the train station. Anyway, we're very excited. If you're over twenty-one, please come and visit us, take a tour. It's really a neat experience. And we're very excited. And I will say, we were approached by several other cities to move during this. And we, of course, it was never, the thought never crossed our mind. So, once again, thank you.
Councilman Benavides, I know he wants to make some comments. He's visited you all.
Yes, you know, I thank you, Brian, for sharing words, but really, it's so much more than what you were able to describe right now. I think you have to go visit it firsthand. It's a work of art in and of itself. When you walk in, the whole apparatus where the distilling takes place, it's beautiful. It's imported from Europe. The design and the rooms itself, there's such a rich element and aspect of the history of Santana, as you mentioned, even going back to the Blinking Owl initial location or entity. But there's so much there richness and it's just, and what you, the product that you produce, it's very, it's just exquisite. I just definitely, you know, encourage folks to come out and take a look at it. I didn't know exactly what to expect. I wanted to go and take a look at it. Remember when we approved it? But walking in, the whole space is just, it's beautiful. And I just really encourage folks to go out and take a look at it. It's taking a step back Santana history, but also looking at just the vibrancy in the future of our city as well. So it's a great place. I'll definitely be back.
Thank you, Councilman Benavides. I definitely have to go by, maybe after the election season, but I did want to go and tour with our staff, you know, other things. But I want, you know, when we have unique businesses, we need to highlight them, we need to support them. You know, not too long ago, you know, I was traveling a lot and I've been able to travel, you know, really, you know, almost every state in the United States and also, you know, the world. And I think of a particular place, Oakland. And I had emailed the city manager when I was there and I was visiting a part of Oakland and I saw industrial, residential, new lofts, transit, and it was just alive. You had people of all ages, you know, from different, you know, parts of the Bay Area, whether they were living there or going to visit. They were in an area that was so vibrant and it looked so familiar to me as I was, I was like, "This is so Santa Ana." Like, we can do this. We can bring in unique, amazing businesses to the city with still having our historic homes, our culture, our history, bringing that all together. And I talk about place-making. At the end of the day, it's about connecting people to places. And I think, you know, you have brought in added addition, you know, you're not too far from our downtown. And so, when people have an opportunity to go through our downtown or through our even train station, they now have an opportunity to really go and take a tour off to the Blinking Owl and then head to some of our new, other... And so we want to congratulate you and wish you much success. And so thank you all so very much for, one, being residents of the city, but also being small business owners. Let me present this to you. This is a token of our appreciation to the Blinking Owl Distillery. Congratulations on establishing the first distillery in Orange County and it's dated the 4th of October.
Now, Councilmember Reyna is going to have the next presentation. I believe he's going to be joined by Councilman David Benavides. And go ahead, Councilmember, you have the floor.
Please, Gonzalo Junior, please join us. To be honest, I'm a little nervous. This is absolutely a privilege for me to be talking about this case today. You know, we talk a lot about the silver bullet and education being the key for that success. Today, you talked, we talked about some of the challenges that we're overcoming and the obstacles that we faced. Well, back in the 40s, there was a lot of discrimination. And unfortunately, if you were Caucasian, you went to one school. And if you were of color, you ended up going to a different school. And those children weren't receiving all the best benefits or the best quality information or teachers that they could have. And what ended up happening was the Mendez, along with other families, tried to register their children into a school. And it was two, it was two brothers with four kids, two each. And as they came into the school, the principal looked and said, these two children that are light-skinned can enter the school. The other two children will have to go to the Mexican school. And so the brother said, we can't do this, we can't separate our kids like this. What do you mean, the kids can't go to the same school? They came back, they had a discussion, several families thought that this was wrong and they wanted to fight this injustice. So the 1940s, they ended up fighting Mendez versus Westminster School Board here in our own backyard. And because of their case, because of their fight and their sacrifice, to me, it changed the world. Why did it change the world? Because now it allowed access to education for everybody. Me and the people behind us, we wouldn't be in the positions we have if it wasn't for this case, for this landmark case that changed the world. Brown versus School Board, eight years later, utilized this as a preference to win their case. And that historic thing happened here in Santa Ana and Westminster and Staten. And it's a beautiful history that unfortunately goes unknown. Some of our elders don't realize the significance of the impact of the changes that they've had. Now Gonzalo, you're going to have to refresh my memory if it's correct, but Sandra was in college and was taking a law school class. And so there was a footnote that said Westminster versus Mendez versus Westminster School Board. She said, I'm from Westminster and Mendez is my name. So she called my, she called her mom and her mom said, no big deal. It's something we did, no big deal. Unfortunately, we are losing way too much of our history because of that. We need to talk with our elders and find out those trials and tribulations and capture that history before it's too gone. And one of the things that we ended up doing in our community several years ago, when myself and Councilman David Benavides had moved into a particular area, then we were residents of the federal empowerment zone and we wanted to create some differences and we realized that our demographics, our young people were having childrens and families and morals and traditions weren't being passed down from one generation to the other. So we wanted to have a Latino hero celebration, someone that our young people can emulate and follow and follow those successes. So of course, the first one was Cesar Chavez. But after that, we really couldn't think of anybody. Oh, you know what? That's great, different country. Oh, I love him too. Different country, different challenges. My father could see how stressed I was. So he ripped off a piece of paper and he wrote a number on it. He goes, here, miho, call these people, they changed the world. I said, sure, pops, how did they change the world? If they changed the world, everybody would know about them. He goes, just give them a call. So I called them, I met with them, and lo and behold, they changed the world. We ended up working with them. This was before the school happened, this was before the stamp happened, this is pretty much before everything that graced their family in that particular case. And we were just trying to figure things out. So many years later, to see the Mendez and the Mendez case and the championing across the world for quality education and desegregation across, they were able to get a stamp that's now national. There are several schools in the state of California that are named after them. I mean, it is absolutely historic, historic opportunity. And in this month of Hispanic recognition, it's definitely an honor to recognize the work that they've done and to educate more and more people of the work that they've done and laid down work so that we could follow in those footsteps and that we can champion the next generation of success. So it's great, my honor, it's my honor to be able to recognize them today, but before I do, I'm going to pass it over to my colleague, David Benavides. Want to share some thoughts?
Thank you, Councilman Reyna. It really is an honor. I'll just be brief. I remember it was a number of years back before a lot of the current recognition, and I didn't know or much about the Mendez family, but that, as we were putting together this event on West Myrtle Street, right in the middle of neighborhood, block off the street, and had this exciting fair. And one of the most challenging, this is one of the neat things, I think, one of the most challenging neighborhoods in the city, one of the hotspots, neighborhood that's impacted by gangs and neighborhood that has a need for improved housing, oftentimes, the types of communities that folks avoid, move away from, places that are oftentimes overlooked. Here, you had this family who had significantly changed education, not only in Orange County, not only in California, throughout the country, were spending time with these kids in this community and that were, chose to be there and share the story and inspire the little ones in that neighborhood. And a lot of those kids now have continued to be a part of local organizations like KidWorks, after-school programs, and now kids from that neighborhood from way back, Gonzalo, are going off to colleges and universities, not only locally, not only throughout the state, but across the country. And it's awesome for them to be able to see you, to see your sister Sylvia, you know, going and seeing the President of the United States, being at the White House and speaking all over the country. And they saw you there in their community, in their neighborhood. So that in itself is just an amazing story experience and testament to just your family's commitment and your parents instilling those values of working hard and giving back to our community. So it was an honor then and definitely certainly is an honor now to stand with you and to applaud your parents, you, your sister Sylvia, and your whole family. So would you please share a little bit about just this experience for you? And let's give them, Gonzalo Junior and his family, a round of applause even now. Thank you, Gonzalo, for being here.
There's nothing left to say. He said it all. I'd just like to thank everybody from the city of Santa Ana, the council itself. I was raised here in Santa Ana, actually, on Third and Ray, and I lived here for about 30 years. And then, like the councilman said, I left. But I still come to Santa Ana a lot. And I would just like to thank everybody, especially the city council, who I know most of. Thank you.
You know, I truly believe we're amongst history right now because this is a historic case that literally a landmark that changed the course of the United States. And for it to happen in our own backyard is absolutely huge. As we continue to showcase and to highlight what's happening in our own backyard, happy to be able to say the city of Santa Ana proclamation, the Mendez, the Mendez family and the Mendez case. Whereas the city of Santa Ana would like to take this opportunity to bring to light a piece of important history, where Sylvia Mendez in the Mendez case, whereas Sylvia Mendez, the daughter of Gonzalo Mendez, a Mexican immigrant, and Felizitas Mendez, a Puerto Rican immigrant, who fought for that Sylvia and her siblings could have equal education throughout the land, fought for this land case battle, Mendez versus Westminster. In 1947, the ruling of Mendez versus Westminster School Board of Orange County, United States Court of Appeal in the Ninth Circuit, in which an act, a decision, how the segregation of Mexican and Mexican-American students separate. Mexican schools were unconstitutional. Because of this, we have now the landmark case. Thank you so very much and give me one more round of applause in recognizing the Mendez case.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Thank you all for that fine presentation. And with that, I want to bring our attention to the consent calendar and ask the city attorney if there's anything to report out.
We do not have any reportable action from closed session.
Okay, so with that, let's go to the consent calendar here real quickly. Councilwoman Martinez, would you like to pull any items?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, 25C, 25D, and 25F.
Any other items by council members?
22B, Mayor.
You want to pull it?
Yes, sir.
Any other items? I will entertain a motion on the balance of the consent calendar then?
So moved.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries unanimously, 22B. To Councilman Benavides, please.
Yes, Mayor, and I just wanted to bring attention to this item. Here, what we're looking at is investing nearly a million dollars towards equipment, specifically its police interceptor vehicles to our police officers out here that are patrolling and serving our community. And just, this is a significant investment on the part of the city, on the part of the council. Our police officers are out there every day, working long, very hard hours and very long hours. Having adequate equipment is important and that's something that here tonight, we're demonstrating that commitment to ensuring that our officers have the equipment that they need to be able to patrol and effectively serve our community and our streets. So I just wanted to highlight, bring this, bring attention to this, make the comment and ask just for everybody's support as I'll be moving the item.
So that's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries unanimously, 22C.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just very quickly, just wanted to ask staff, this item is a purchase and installation and maintenance of a corporate yard, water-wise vehicle washing facility and purchase of maintenance and supplies as needed by the city corporate yard. As you all know, we're all trying to conserve water. And I know that in our, in our public works, we have our, as is mentioned here, we have our own vehicle washing facility. And so just wanted to be very clear for the public to understand that we are...
Councilwoman Martinez, 22C.
No, I said 25C, Mr. Mayor.
25C, sorry about that. All right, please continue.
Yes, I said 25C, so, yeah, may I continue? Thank you very much.
Yes.
So I just wanted to ask the staff on this issue, as it pertains to the, to the water of the vehicle, pretty much it's a car wash, you know, within our public works, what kind of water we are currently using? If it's potable water, if it's recycled water? I would like for us to state that for the record.
By the way, just real quickly, for the record, I think it was a mistake, but the clerk heard 22C and I did as well.
No, I said 25C.
So, so either way, I want to make sure we approve 22C as part of the previous motion. Please go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. The intent is to use recycled water. The thing is that currently, we're losing a lot of water as vehicles use the car wash. We only retain maybe 5%. So the water that's going to be used will be recycled through the system and be used and be used for additional...
But we're not using recycled water now.
I'd have to check on that.
So I asked this question not to throw our staff under the bus or to make a point that, 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 we have to practice what we preach, right? And so if we are not using, if we are using potable water, shame on us. We should be using recycled water as we tell our small business, we tell our residents to conserve. And us, on the other hand, to washing cars, we're actually using potable water, which is drinking water. And so I have issue with that. And so you can't answer that question for me today. I'm not, you know, and again, it's not my intent to throw anyone under the bus, but I think it's important and I have a responsibility to address this issue that when we're going to be approving here, and I get what we're doing, is that we want to repair the water usage, but what I would like to know, when will we transfer to using recyclable water to do our car wash?
Thank you, Councilwoman Martinez. We don't know. We have to have a separate system in there to do recycling. There may be a situation where we can buy the recycled water and use that for the car wash. Can we wait and get those answers?
Yeah, yeah, it's not, it's not a...
But we'll look at those options.
You know, and with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm not going to go into it. And again, it's not my intent to throw staff under the bus, but I think, you know, we have my colleague Roman up here all the time talking about conserving water and here we are, not doing that within our own city. And so, you know, I can't support this item, so I'm just going to be a no vote and want to state that for the record.
All right, so, Councilwoman Reyna.
At the yard, do we have a purple pipe capability?
Excuse me?
Do we have purple pipe capability at the yard?
That I'd have to check. I, you know, I don't know the engineering or the mechanics of that.
Because if we don't have it now, that's probably a direction that we should go into because it's exactly direct affecting what she's talking about and having that capability of utilizing recycled water.
We, Mayor, this is not a focus on the recycled water. The purpose of this was to maintain a car wash facility at the corporate yard so we wouldn't have to procure the car wash outside of the city. There's a lot of savings and efficiency. It doesn't provide the recycled water. To use your point, two-thirds of the water is already recycled in the system. We don't have to have a car wash at the yard. I just think it's going to be very expensive to put that system in and it would, I'm not sure whether or not we require that from the car washers. I don't believe any of the car washers use recycled water in Santa Ana, I'm not sure.
Councilwoman Martinez, do you know to the...
Mr. Mayor, yes, there are car washes that use recyclable water, so that's, that's an incorrect statement.
I didn't, I didn't say it was true or false. I said we weren't aware of it. But we can bring the item back, we just, there's no...
Well, how much time would you need to bring it back?
Two weeks is fine.
All right, why don't we, I'll entertain a motion to continue for two weeks. Second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now, is it 25?
The next item is 25D, Mr. Mayor. And this is an on-call, right-of-way coordinator and property appraisal services for non-general funds, strategic plan, you know, public works agency. And this is really authorizing two-year renewal option to exercise, you know, really to move forward and hire these property, rural property coordinators as it pertains to either Bristol or Warner. And so it's just in a tune of almost $1 million. And so as I look at the agreement, on the first agreement, and I would like for our public works director to come up here because I've brought in this issue up in the past. The first agreement with Civil Source, Inc., you know, we had a prior, actually, an employee that used to work here for the city of Santa Ana, now with this firm. And so I want to bring up this issue, making sure that we actually went to tell us to process, that we actually went for request for proposal and getting the best, you know, business or contractor to do this work, you know, because, you know, I'm going to be a no vote, but again, for transparency reasons, it's important that the public know, that my colleagues know, that this particular contract is with a former employee of the city of Santa Ana.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Just for that purpose, we went out and put an RFP out and make sure that we have fresh blood into the system, we have new companies hopefully that come and do this.
Now, is it 25?
The next item is 25D, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
And this is an on-call, right-of-way coordinator and property appraisal services for non-general funds, strategic plan, you know, public works agency, and this is really authorizing two, two-year renewal option to exercise, you know, really to move forward and, and hire these property, rural property coordinators, as it pertains to either Bristol or Warner, and so it's just in a tune of almost $1 million. And so as I look at the agreement, on the first agreement, and, and I would like for our public works director to come up here, because I've brought in this issue up in the past, the, the first agreement with Civil Source, Inc., you know, we had a prior, actually an employee that used to work here for the city of Santa Ana, now with this firm, and so I want to bring up this issue, making sure that we actually went to tell us the process, that we actually went for request for proposal, and getting the best, you know, business or contractor to do this work, you know, because, you know, I, I'm going to be a no vote, but again, for transparency reasons, it's important that the public know, that my colleagues know, that this particular contract is with a former employee of the city of Santa Ana.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, just for that purpose, we went out and put an RFP out, and make sure that we have fresh blood into the system, we have new companies, hopefully, that come and do this work. This is pretty much a specialized kind of work that we do, they're, they're augmenting our staff, and we received two bids for this. One of the companies were just new, and they were, they got a really low score in the panel that, that scored them, and civil service was, got a high score, but we're intending to go back again, to make sure we have at least three companies on that category. But since we have to move these projects forward, we decided to go ahead and request for approval of this, this company, so we can get, get the project moving while we're getting, hopefully, two more companies to come in and provide support.
And I know you all are going to have several questions, and I'll pass it all to you, and the problem is, why I bring this up, and my dissatisfaction is that I've not supported any acquisitions on Bristol or on Warner, because a lot of these companies that we have hired have not done a good job, have mistreated our residents, have not been very forthcoming to the business community, and these are the businesses that are representing the city of Santa Ana, and so I just wanted to state that for the fact, for the record, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Sarmiento, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also think that, look, I know there's a, an exigency element to it, that we have to, you know, move on things, and I appreciate you procuring and going out and finding folks, but I do have some reservations as well with some of the, some of the firms that we've contracted with, and I understand that we go into it with the best of hopes, and sometimes we do see that they have fallen short. So to the extent that maybe during the procurement process in the future, or with others, you talk about that being sort of the shortcoming of some of their predecessors, and I do have some reservations, because I think the council member had brought to my attention that there was a former employee that did have some issues as well, and, you know, with performance, I'm not saying they were, there wasn't anything that couldn't be overcome, but I know, Fred, you do a very, very good job, and I appreciate you and your staff going out of your way, because you also, as we stall, not stall, but as we say, let's try to do a better job in, in our retention of firms and contracting with firms, we're also telling you to speed up, right? So you're trying to do many different things at the same time, you're trying to accomplish our deadlines, you're trying to accomplish, you know, things on a very short-term basis, but, you know, we just know that we hold you to a higher, higher standard, and so we appreciate the good work that you do.
Thank you.
With that, what is the pleasure of the council, I would entertain a motion.
May I have a comment, or question actually, for, for you, Fred? So the, the entity that's being recommended here, is it a new organization, new, new vendor to the city in this, and is it in the capacity of aiding in right-of-way acquisition, where they will, they would be talking to the property owners and residents out there in the community, and representing the city on negotiations? Is that part of what their task will be?
As part of acquisition process is, one, evaluating the properties, working with appraisal, appraisers, and number of other expertise that help us in, in this process. This company, right-of-way coordinator, basically, they help coordinating that work. They don't specifically make a decision, a decision is made by, by a staff here, they coordinate the communication among, among number of entities that are required to go through the acquisition process. So they're augmenting a staff, basically, to get things moving.
So would they ultimately be, to the point of my, my colleagues are making, some of the vendors that we have used in the past, one of them, which is listed here on the, on the other service, the real estate property appraisal services, has not necessarily had the best, at least from what our residents have, have communicated, the best interaction, they have not necessarily represented the city well. There've been comments, people have come here before us, council, at other community meetings, where, where the, putting it plainly, just very, very poor customer service, when somebody's being approached to sell their property, a place that is their home, for the purpose of public benefit, the right-of-way acquisition, you know, street widening and such, you know, it's, it's, yes, there's a need for, for the community and for the city, but at the same time, they need to, if the people are going out, we're contracting them to represent us, to negotiate on our behalf, to go out and knock on doors, and, and speak to our, our residents, representing us, again, they, they need to come in a way that is worthy of being a city representative, that, that, where there is going to be courtesy, excellent customer service, communication, full disclosure of information, that, that needs to be presented, so that at the end of the day, we feel with, with full enough peace of mind, that the people are treated with dignity, are treated well, that they represented the city well, and, and at the end of the day, it's, it's a win-win, if you will, across the board, and that, that we're not misrepresented, or, or that the city is not then tainted in our, our view out in the public, because our representatives did not represent us well, did not treat the people well. So that, that's, you know, the, the concern that I'm expressing, that I think I hear some of my colleagues mentioning as well, so my question is, again, is this, this vendor, the right-of-way coordinator, the person who would actually be going out to speak to the, the residents or the property owners out there, when it comes to the negotiation process, to acquire the property for some of the right-of-way acquisition?
They can be involved in that process, but most of their work is coordinating among different expertise we have, and just wanted to emphasize that I 100% agree with, with your assessment, our residents deserve the best service, and it's a kind of a tough situation, acquisition, and we've done hundreds of acquisition along that route, and we do get complaints here and there, but we're focused to provide the best service we can, and I'm hoping to add to that list, and we take any kind of a complaint from the residents, especially in this area, very seriously. I personally get involved with that, if we, we see something that been unfair situation, or people have not been treated the way they should.
To echo what my colleague just mentioned, I, I do believe, and I've seen that, that you personally, in your tenure here with the city, with, over the last couple years, have made it a point to be able to be very professional, both with council, the public, the, the vendor here that's being recommended clearly by the process, has received high score, so I trust that the process was done well, you've heard clearly, message from, from council, so given all of that, I'm going to go ahead and, and move this item.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I will second.
We have a second. I, I just want to add that maybe certain things are fundamental, like language, you know, if, if the residents speak Spanish, for example, just got to make sure that when we approach, that, that, you know, they understand what we're talking about. I also will add that maybe out of folks here on the council, I might be the only one that's actually been on the, on the other side of the city approaching, when they were trying to, you know, take our muffler shop many years ago, and I'll tell you, the very nature of that discussion is hostile, because, you know, there's not a real nice way to say, I want to buy your property, if you don't want to sell your property, and I know this is right-of-way and all that, and so, so I think even the more need there is to try to just be as, as sensitive and understanding, and compromising, and transparent, and open, and as possible. So maybe enough said for now, but, but we have a motion and a second, so those in favor, please say aye.
No.
Aye, those opposed, please record a no vote for Councilor Martinez, I believe. With that, Councilor Martinez, 25F.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just also want to state for the record that I'm a no vote on the Bristol Street Improvements Phase Four Real Property Partial Acquisition, and just want to state for the record that I'm a no vote on all that, just because of the process of we've, we've taken, that I'm not supportive of it, but it has nothing to do with the property owners that we're trying to go into negotiations with, has nothing to do with them, and so just want to state that for the record, I'm a no vote.
All right, with that, is there a motion on, on the item?
I'll move the item.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Yes, Mr. City Manager?
With the councilwoman's permission, I'd like to see if we could revisit 25C1?
Yeah, I think the city manager wants to just clarify that we're using 79% of recyclable water, but it's still not 100%, but we're using 79%, so, but I still think-
79 is better than zero, but not as good as 100.
And it stays 20, 20 gallons per cycle, we, we weren't clear in how we did it, so the bottom line is, we have to go with this very efficient savings, or redo the whole RFP, but this would be a 79% of the water recycled during the wash.
Well, look, in an election, 79% would be a good number.
Yeah, so if you guys want to bring that item back and vote on it, that's great, if, I'm-
All right, why don't we bring the item back, having said that? Would we want to consider it at 79%?
I'll move the item.
All right, we have a motion and a second, I think, Councilor Reyna, did you second?
Are we talking about bringing it back?
Right now, to vote.
The main question concerned was the use of-
Recycled water, and it turns out that it's 79%. It's not 100, but it's way more than zero, and at least we can move forward with it as we try to get to 100.
We can feel 80% good about it.
If you round up-
The current system, Mayor, is 5% recycled, so this is a huge savings and very water-efficient system.
All right.
All right.
All right, so we're reconsidering it then, now it's before us.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to be a no vote, because it should be 100%, but you all go ahead.
But is it a softer no?
It's a softer no, yes.
All right, it's a softer no. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries, it's a softer no.
Mayor, two things here on consent. One is, I'd like to recommend that we excuse Councilwoman Tena Heda, was not able to, was not able to make-
I think we should reconsider that.
And the, so, I don't know if you want to-
Okay, if that's a motion, I'll be a second on that.
Those in favor, let's vote for Sal.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Second item is, I overlooked on 13A, even though the, the motion, or that agenda item passed unanimously, but I'd like to record an abstention, it's regarding youth commission, my daughter happens to be the, the candidate there for that.
Can we just either bring it back, or could you record an abstention?
Yes, you can reconsider, or I would accept it.
All right, let's bring it back to reconsider, it's item 13.
I'll move it.
We have a motion and a second, Councilor Benavides is going to abstain, it involves his daughter, who I think is doing a great job on that commission. With that, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries with one abstention. Thank you, Councilor Benavides. So with that, Madam City Clerk, are we on 55A?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Mayor Protem, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Now, item 55B, I would entertain a motion.
Entertain, move the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, do we have a-
Second.
Motion and a second, those in favor, please say aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries. 75A, this is a public hearing, it's a public hearing to adopt, or consider adopting an ordinance, amending Charter 36 of the Santa municipal code, establishing speed limits for, for the city, in particular, in front of Councilor Martinez's home, no, I'm kidding it, it's throughout the city. If we don't, I know we have staff for a presentation, but let's just put that aside for a moment. Does anybody wish to address the city on this item?
I have not received any cards.
Any written communications?
None received.
Okay, so the public hearing is now open, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to council for consideration, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, do you have a comment?
Please go ahead.
Thank you, and I know we have a presentation, and, you know, I, I do want to thank our public works staff, and Fred, our executive director, he does an amazing job with the very little resources that he has, he's done an amazing job, you know, he's, you know, I think he's coming on his second year here, and I will tell you that he has been a blessing, and we've seen tremendous change here in the city, but, you know, Fred, I do have concern, and I know you're not a part of everything, you know, you have a big staff, you know, on this item here, you know, I believe what you're presenting to us is status quo, and I don't agree with the status quo, is we're moving with SAMA, and we're looking at making sure we provide the different infrastructure to make safety improvements, as you're making mention here on, on your presentation, whether being narrowing lane widths, bike lanes, bulb, about, radar feedback signs, you know, this is a very complex issue, very technical, so people don't understand transportation, don't understand, you know, the laws from the state level, and then who designate speed limits, and the reasons why we're doing the, you know, 75 to 80 percentile to designate speeds, you know, and I know that a lot has to do with, you know, with our police department, if they're going to be using those radar guns to, to, to identify, you know, what that speed is, and essentially, when they're using those radar guns, is, are people speeding, and are we giving tickets, right? And that's how we determine, how we're determining our speeds here. I want us to go away from the status quo, I want to see if staff can do some research of how we can designate, de-designate some of our streets, and come and provide us some alternatives. You know, I, I don't want us to, you know, as we move forward, and we're saying that safety is important, public safety is important, we all know that someone that's going 25, 30 miles an hour, you know, the likelihood of them surviving, you know, it's, it's not, it's not very high, and you're going 35, 40, 50 miles, the likelihood of you surviving is even less, and so I think as we've made strides in making sure that our roads are safer with the infrastructure and the work that you've done, Fred, I really believe that if we do more research, and we figure out a way, how can we re, de-designate some of these streets to lower the speed, and this is not the, Santa Ana would not be the first to be doing this, San Francisco, New York, Seattle, and so, again, I think it's important for us, and, and, and I mentioned it at the last council meeting, that when I go on my walk and talks, the first issue the residents bring up are traffic concerns, the, the speeds, and everyone in our community, they want speed bumps, that, you know, that's the first thing that they bring up to, to you, Fred, and to your traffic engineers, and we all know that with speed bumps, from a public safety perspective, you know, the, the amount of time to, to, of response times, it lowers that, and so we're looking at other ways to, you know, narrowing our world, our, our widths, and providing other infrastructure, and then as well, feedback signs, that many of us see out in our street, whether it be on Bristol now, we see them on, on Grand, on First, it tells you how fast you're going, and, and so I would like to see, and, and I know, I'm not sure where Councilman Reyna went, if we can continue this item, and if staff can do some research, and provide us some alternatives of how we can de-designate some of our streets to lower our speeds.
So is that a continuance?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm asking for a continuance.
If I may, if I may add-
Go ahead, Fred.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. As you know, we engage in a comprehensive program, SAMSA, for pedestrian and bicycle safety, and we will present it to council pretty soon, what we're planning to do, and meanwhile, we have a lot of, you know, we, we brought in about $34 million worth of grant money that would help us out to engineer some of these efforts, and the reason I wanted to highlight this was just, this is just the beginning of what we're trying to do. The next step would be the entire, we, we're recommending to have the downtown and the business area, the entire area blanketed 25 mile-per-hour zone. We're working on that with, with our attorney's office and engineering, see if we can do it the way it's supposed to be. And next would be also SAMSA, that would be coming in in November, would, would provide comprehensive and concrete solutions in the area of engineering, enforcement, and education. So this is just the beginning, that we have to do this thing per law, to bring the speed down, at least on these streets, and actually, the result of some of this engineering treatment that we have done, it, it actually made it possible to bring the speed down on these streets. So we, we're taking it as many of the streets as we can right now, but we're coming in with a comprehensive 25 mile-per-hour zone in the areas that we feel is very dangerous. As you know, this is, it's the critical thing, and we have high number of injuries and collisions in these areas.
You know, Fred, I agree, but again, I'm going to want to continue, you're not providing us any alternatives, you're telling us this is state law, right? And for the reasons being, because when you, looking at our, our, our public safety and our law enforcement, when they're out there, our patrol with radars, that we have to use that 75 to 80 percentile, but if we were to go away without using those radars, we would be able to reduce our speeds, and so we all know that, you know, the, the inf- And so, we all know that, you know, the infrastructure improvements that we're making, and the amount of money that we're bringing in, is not going to be able to fix the entire city in a year or two, and we have people continuing to dine, to dine on our streets, whether biking or walking, at high numbers. And so here, you're asking us, because it's state law, to allow, you know, our police officers to use their radar guns, when we're already doing everything else, and feedback signs. And Chief Rojas, I'm not sure how many officers do we actually have on patrol that actually deal with traffic safety on a daily basis?
In terms of, it's called a radar gun, probably our motor officers have, so about 16 of them in the entire city.
Correct, and so, again, I don't know how we can work with our police chief and yourself, and come back with us with some alternatives, because for me, right now, I could not be supportive, and I know this is very technical for some, you know, what I'm discussing here about de-designating, and looking at the different radar guns, and providing alternatives, but I would just ask my colleagues to know that we can do something good here. We don't have to go with the status quo. We actually can make changes and not follow state law, and do what other communities are doing to reduce traffic speeds now versus later.
Well, why don't we continue it? How long do you suggest to have time to really do it?
I'm not sure how long it would take you to provide us alternatives.
So, let me just clarify these things. All it says here in this study, that this group of streets, the average speed, let's say it was posted, the speed was 40 mile per hour, and now because of all of these effects that was put in place, now their speed is 25 mile per hour. And we want to put the 25 mile per hour signs on those streets at this point. So all the effects and all the things that was done, reduce the average speed. So we want to let people know that now their speed limit is actually 25 mile. We want to bring down the 40 mile per hour signs and replace it with 25 mile per hour. And this is going to be enforceable in case somebody want to protest it, and, you know, they can, it's enforceable now because we're following all the rules. But we have this blanket work that we want to do, that would be brought in on top of everything else.
And Fred, I guess I just bring this up because you're being ambitious, and that's what I like so much about you. You're like wanting to get this done, this is your baby, I get it, but what if we don't get the funding, right, the rest of the funding to finish SAMA, right? We don't, it's not funded. This city council has not approved, one, the plan, and two, the funding to actually do these, what you're wanting to do with this Vision Zero plan. And so, I just want us, and if you're asking me today to support this because you think it's going to help you, look, I'll do that. But I also know, Fred, that the plan is not funded, right? And we're only receiving so many dollars from grants. And so, what I would ask of you, if you're asking me to give you this yes vote, and I know it's state law because of this, you know, we only have 16 officers, and we're going to redo this to 25, but we're asking to designate all these different streets as we move forward, you know, what I would ask of you is to, and I hope my colleagues, that when you do bring this plan forward, that we're going to actually put the money behind the treatments that you want, right, to help with the rest of the plan that you're wanting to bring forward for the safety, infrastructure, really engineering that we need to, one, lower the traffic with different mechanisms.
Yes, we'll do that. It just, right now, we're just getting an authorization to let's change the speed limit from 40 mile to 25, 25 mile per hours. Maybe some people will just pay attention to that, and hopefully lower the speed. But we also have a recommendation to jumpstart the SAMSA program, which in time, we'll bring it to council, and we'll discuss it.
Just, can you just, very briefly, because I know it's not on here, what would be the funding to fund SAMSA?
We, we have...
You can, it's not on the agenda, but it's related to the item, so, but you know what, Fred, because I understand the work that you're doing, and, you know, I appreciate you getting on this and making these reductions, but again, it's kind of status quo. I'm going to support you on this, and I'm hopeful that when you bring the Vision Zero plan, what you call SAMSA, that my colleagues will be supportive to help fund, you know, the other treatments that we need to make sure that we keep our residents safe on the streets. So I'll move the item, Mr. Mayor.
Understood. Okay, we have a motion.
And I'll second with comment.
And a second. Mayor Protem with comment.
So let me put my thinking cap on, because I know this is a complex issue, and I want to see if I can think my way through the logic. So what we're doing is not going to prevent us from getting funding, it may not assist us from getting funding, but it's a first step, right? And I know that we, you know, look, in the nine years that we've all been here, or some of us, and in the last four years, we've had to learn, you know, issues having to do with planning, building, you know, public, open space, housing, you know, streets. And so, you know, a lot of this isn't rocket science, a lot of this is kind of basic understanding of what we're trying to do. And I think the objective of SAMSA, save streets, everything that we've done has been to try to address an underlying problem, which is, we've seen more fatalities by, you know, pedestrians and bicyclists, right? And so, I think this is one step, even if we couldn't fund anything else, and you're telling us we're going to reduce some arterials in some streets in the city from 40 to 25, that's a good start. I think that's not, you know, even if we were to do just that in some areas, that's going to help, because it's going to help prevent some accidents. Again, I think to the council member's, you know, point, that doesn't mean that, you know, it's over, you know, game stops, or, you know, we're not going to go further. It's funny, because I remember having this discussion about an energy policy we were going to have years ago when I came on the council, and we said, well, let's not take that first step, because we want to do a whole comprehensive program. And I know when, when the mayor chaired the Energy Commission, we had really high hopes of doing a comprehensive energy program. Well, lo and behold, that, you know, comprehensive program never came, and we never did much. So I think, again, to the council member's point, we may not get funding for this, but if we can take even this step, that's not going to mutually exclude, or is going to exclude, anything that we do further, then I think it's a good step to take, and hopefully it'll show some commitment on our behalf that we want to do something to improve the safety of our pedestrians and bicyclists.
Crawl, walk, run. Thank you. So we have therefore a motion and a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Now, it's item 80A. It's a resolution approving a plan for spending Series A tax allocation bonds. I would entertain a motion, and is that also an item on the city council agenda, Madam City?
Yes, it's on the successor agency.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Second by Mesqua, is that okay?
Sure.
All right, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Now, the next item would therefore be 80B.
B.
I would entertain a motion on item 80B.
So moved.
Now, a second by Councilor Martinez.
Why can't you second it, Mr. Mayor?
I can, but typically, I like to have others.
I'll second.
All right, we have Mayor Protem, thank you. With that, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Now, Madam City Attorney, are we adjourning and doing a joint meeting between the city council and the successor agency? And did that, now we're going to convene the housing authority? Okay, I would entertain a motion on the housing authority. Consent counter items one and two.
So moved.
Well, a motion, I'll make a second, so Councilor Martinez is happy. Those in favor...
Can we include the absence of Councilmember Tina Haro?
Oh.
All right, let's make that part of the motion. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Now, we're going to adjourning the housing authority meeting and convene, is it just the successor agency, Madam City Clerk? So I would entertain a motion on just the successor agency. Consent counter items one and two.
Motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Reina.
Second.
Second by Mesqua. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Items three and four have already been considered, so I'm going to adjourn that successor agency and reconvene the city council meeting, and bring it to the city manager, I believe, and WS1.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, I'd like to introduce Arardo. We've had a groundbreaking, actually, we had a celebration of a new park today and some other projects, and we'd like to take a few minutes to highlight that.
It's my pleasure to bring to you this park project update. It's very exciting for me to be able to do this, because there's been a lot of investment that you have approved and provided leadership in improving our parks. We are, have spent, are planning to spend, and have identified a total of $22 million 61 and $897 for park improvement projects. The monies, those monies were assembled in a variety of creative ways by the leadership and by staff, by the city manager's direction, to leverage 33%. A third of the $22 million is park fee money, which is primarily residential projects because of the improved local economy, park fees. Another 33% has been competitive state grants from the state of California government on different grant projects. 20% of this money has been federal grants, federal monies, like CDBG and other types of federal grants. And 10% has been very wisely focused on a lot of park deferred maintenance, which was the surplus money you all approved. And then 5% general fund, a lot of it was the use of the liability fund to help with the stadium project. So the 29 projects that totaled $22 million come from a variety of different categories, lots of different things, because I didn't have time to go to every single 29. I want to give you the different categories. For example, eight playground, new playground equipments, replacements, tennis courts, basketball courts, other hard surface repairs in parks. A new park, you, some of you, we had our ribbon cutting today, for example, for a new park. We are also fully funded for the new Pacific Electric Park, and then park expansions, the Jerome Park Center Street is being, we have an urban greening grant where we're going to take the concrete out of that street that splits the park, and it'll become more park. This is a park expansion. The park safety improvements, it's just lights and surveillance cameras part of this overall budget. Municipal stadium improvements, you've been very much updated on every phase of that project, which is complete. Soccer fields, we're going to, and the last slide is telling you about our ribbon cuttings and the ceremonies, the two soccer fields that we just completed at the Danyang Soccer Complex at Centennial Park, a new community, a new 10,000 square foot community center at Roosevelt Walker, and a great zoo exhibit. For example, I picked some of the 29 projects. We have the Santa Ana Stadium renovation. This is, you know, our stadium is something very dear to our hearts, to this community. We invested $1,570,300, and all of these projects, by the way, could not be done without the great management from Public Works. They're our project manager, and they're the ones that are always diligently making sure that our contractors do a really good job, that the quality of their work is done, and it's done on time, so we're very much appreciated with the partnerships with Public Works. We did a lot of concrete information, and you know what? We were, we made it for the football season, and we're going to be having a dedication. I'll share with you a date in a bit for that. Today, we did the ribbon cutting for the Memory Lane Park. That was an amazing creative way to leverage a very much needed housing project, 41 units at the Vista Little Rio, and we were able to compete with, for park state monies that had to do with that type of housing. So it wasn't just any kind of park project, and we were able to get $1 million. We used, very wisely, we used our park fee monies, about $205,000, to leverage, to make sure that we competed and get the grant. So we take park fee monies to put in a 10% or whatever it is to be more competitive, and you, we did the ribbon cutting today. It's a beautiful little park at the gateway of entering our city on Memory Lane and San Ana River. We have, as I mentioned earlier, seven parks that have playground equipment. These are the list of the parks that have almost a total of $9 of $1 million in playground, replacing old playground equipment. You know, a lot of, a lot of people, we do need more park space, but one of the things that is of value, of recognition in Santa Ana more than Irvine, our parks are used so much more because we're so densely packed, which means that there's more wear and tear, which means our thing, our equipment is used more often, and so we have to invest in repairing as much as possible, because it's used more often. So we really appreciate your leadership on the playground equipments. We have a lot of young people that, the playground, and even today, some of you that were there, you noticed the children were there playing with, as soon as we opened it up, they were there playing in the, using the playground equipment. Security lights is very important. We have about $864,000 that we're currently investing in eight parks. Those are the parks there, that are listed there. And then, you know, since December 21, 2009, this council was about to approve that 1.4 acre to become low-income housing, and instead, you decided to take leadership and begin exploring it becoming a park. And now it's fully funded, the design is done, where our Public Works is about to go out and release the bids, and I'm hoping that we're going to be able to announce a groundbreaking pretty soon. It's going to be an amazing park on McFadden and Orange. The Roosevelt Joint Use Improvement Project, the school district is getting ready to release the bid. The state, the city of Santa Ana received the largest possible amount for Prop 84, the last funding cycle of $5 million. We, you recently approved an additional amount, because we anticipate there's going to be a need because of the cost of construction, and it's going to be a wonderful project there on Standard and Chestnut, where the two schools align with each other, Roosevelt and Walker. It's not just a community center, but also a park and other amenities.
Head out on that one before you take off. What kind of timeline are we looking at that?
Oh, it takes over a year once they, once they approve. This is a 10,000 square, if you remember Garfield, that was a 10,000 square foot building. This is a little bit more complicated, because it's not just a building, it's a park. But I'm very, very excited. It's, it's a very unique way to provide open space, recreation space for the community, and it's to take advantage of not being able to buy land and then develop it as a park, but joining partnership, and this is going to be an amazing project. But it takes over a year once the contract is done.
The grant that we received to help support this, is it time-sensitive? Are we in danger of losing it?
No, we're not in danger, but I think the city manager and myself, under his leadership, we've been telling the school district, you know, we're ready to go, let's not hesitate. And wisely, the school district held off, because in the summer, prices are more expensive, because there's more schools being produced. So it was, it was a good call on their part to wait for the fall to do the rebid, because it was, it was bid out already once, it was too expensive, we've added more money, we are, we are not, there's no way that this community should return $5 million to the state on this project. We have to move forward. It's just, we wouldn't, we would end up decreasing our competitiveness for future grants if we were to do so. So it has to move forward, and it's going to be a great project. It's a great project.
I would absolutely agree, and that's why I wanted to make sure that we're not in danger of losing it.
No, I, no, we're, timing-wise, we're not in danger, no, but we do have to move forward on it. We have an amazing project. You know, you all are familiar with the Amazon's Edge Waterfall. It's probably one of our most inspiring exhibits. It's a little old, it was built in 1993. It needs to be refurbished, but instead of just finding money to refurbish, let's find money and add a window so people can see these critters swim, and choose a species that is, has a puppy face, is large, is exotic, and is always active and moving during, you name it. And they're very voracious eaters in seafood, so the Giant River Otter, we already have 1.4 million, and I have to tell you, the Friends of the Santa Ana Zoo are truly friends. They're doing a great, successful job in raising the balance of the money, and we appreciate all your, your help on that.
And you should, and you should let them know as well that that's...
And you should, and you should let them know as well that that's being partnered with the Orange County Water District.
Absolutely.
To talk about the filtration of the water.
That's right.
And so, it won't be just an exhibit that's going to entertain, but it'll educate.
It'll educate.
And also, and the Discovery Cube staff is helping with.
That's right.
Design and more in-kind contributions. So, it is a very unique project.
Great.
That brings, you know, agencies together, creativity and imagination together, and education as well.
The combination of this endangered species with water conservation is just ideal. And you're right, the Discovery Science Center and OC Water District is so supportive. We appreciate your leadership and others.
And by the way, when is the Ferris wheel going to be up? I know that.
They're working on it, it's being built.
So, we've got a Ferris wheel coming in as well with this, so.
Yes, it's a 62-foot.
Zoo's looking good, right? Now we're living.
And so, we had today, this is my last slide, we had today the Memory Lane ribbon cutting. Put it on your calendar on Saturday, October 15th at 11:00 a.m. We're inviting all the soccer organizations to come and celebrate and cut a big sheet cake designed like a soccer field and celebrate the fact that we, we put, you all approved to put new synthetic field on Field Two, which is adult soccer, and on Field Four, which is youth soccer. And, and they're already using it and playing, but we're going to have the party or the little reception on Saturday, October the 15th with the soccer community at Dan Young Soccer Complex. And then, the San Ana Stadium renovation, we want to celebrate the fact that our beautiful concrete solid is now going to remain concrete solid for a long time. And we're going to have a nice little dedication for all of those that love the stadium on Tuesday, October 18th at 3:30. Windsor Tennis Court and Cabrillo Tennis Courts are being rebuilt. You can see those dates. They're currently being worked on by the management of Public Works Project, and of course, the Riverview Basketball Court as well for October the 26th. Be happy to take any questions. That was my last slide.
Just real quick, you caught my attention a lot on the whole thing. Going back to that last slide, you had certain dates.
Those are, yes, the park openings.
Ribbon cuttings, all those are ribbon cuttings.
Yes.
So, we can all be really busy doing a lot of ribbon cuttings.
Yes.
Got it. Thank you. Can you just make sure they get all the council members, secretaries and agendas and all that?
Absolutely.
I mean, it could be on as FYIs.
Sure.
But if it's on there, I think we're all more apt to, you know, try to attend.
Very good.
So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Before I go to any other comment, I have public comments here. So, Alex Vega, followed by Leona Albert Scherden, followed by Concepcion Vasquez. Please go ahead, Alex.
Si, van, es, va a necesitar a Cesar Vargas para que haga la interpretación en inglés.
You want translation?
Si, lo pedí desde el principio.
All right, let me go for the next one while they come down. Leona Albert Scherden, are you here? Concepcion Vasquez, are you here? Do you need translation? No, you don't. Come on down, and then Alex will go after you. And after that, Verell Gerler from the Magnolia Science Academy, please go ahead, Concepcion.
Good afternoon, Councilman Mayor. I'm here from CEC. I'm a student government. I'm the vice president, and I'm here to announce that I'm gladly joined my ASG. This is my second year, and I love the school, and it's been grateful for me and my family. And I'm being in like, actually, in a great sample, going to school, mom, and going to work for my three children. There are two going to Century and one going to Sierra. And they have admired me for a lot because I've been going to work and I'm also going to school and attending this particular, although school, it's helping me a lot, and my kids, and providing us with a lot of, a lot of help, and I really appreciate my school. I really am thankful for you guys and for the upcoming years that we have with you guys as helping us. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you for coming down.
Buenas noches. Este, tenía mucho que no venía a hablar porque lo pensé bastante y es algo que, hay pocas cosas que me quitan el sueño y esta me lo ha estado quitando. Y esto es referente a una persona que yo admiro y he trabajado con él, pero buscándolo por alguna razón de negocio, fui a la casa al señor Sarmiento. No estaba. Volví a ir, no estaba. Me encontré con un trabajador de la familia de muchos años y dice, "Él no vive aquí." Él no vive aquí? No, aquí él no asiste solamente por cita, pero él es, lo puedes encontrar en la mera ciudad. Okay, gracias. Después, siguiendo preguntando, preguntando, alguien me dice, que alguien que los conocen muchos años, "Alex, tiene más de dos años que no vive ahí. ¿Cómo? No, tiene más de dos años. Okay." So, empecé a ver, a hablar con gente, y me doy cuenta que está viviendo en Orange. Bonita casa, por cierto. Y si no mal recuerdo, fue elegido por cuatro votos. Cuatro votos. Después, cuando estaban pasando de las cosas, los cambios, los pleitos internos, que eso es cosa de ustedes, le pregunto a Tinajero, "¿Qué está pasando?" Y si es que aquí cada quien trae su propia conspiración.
Alex, si podemos hablar de.
No, 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 por favor. Tengo tres minutos, y si tienes educación, no me interrumpas. Gracias. Gracias. Entonces, ¿conspiración de qué estás hablando? Arreglan las cosas, en vez de estarse, lo hacen para 12 años, y en vez de estarse 12 años, 14. Pero ya tiene dos años votando en cosas que conciernen a los residentes de Santana. Yo soy un residente de Santana, y ya lo he dicho, "Santanero for life, es santanero on the afterlife." Entonces, si no vive en Santana, tengo las pruebas de gente allegada, fotografías, tenemos todo, pero esta no es una cosa de, de, de veteora, no. Son dos años votando y no viviendo en Santana. Su familia lo sabe, sus hijos lo saben. Qué triste que tengamos que llevar a este punto, porque el electorado lo tiene que saber. Si tú juras proteger y servir a Santana y no vives en Santana, algo raro está pasando. Entonces, si vives en Orange, está muy bien, pero no te olvides, Santana para los santaneros. Y si no vives en Santana, que está comprobado, por favor, dedícate a tu familia en Orange. Busca una.
Alex, ya acabó.
Una opción, no, estoy en, terminando.
No, ya, ya está.
Estoy terminando, por favor. Entonces, hagamos las cosas bien.
If you can just start the translation.
Hagamos las cosas bien. Dios los bendiga, Dios bendiga Santana.
Good evening, members. Good evening. I'm here. I haven't been here for a long time because I've been giving this a lot of thought, and I lose sleep over a few things, but this is one of those things. And I'm speaking to hear about, to speak about someone I admire. I've worked with him before, and I looked, I was looking for Mr. Sarmiento at his home, and he wasn't there. I went back, and he wasn't there. I asked somebody who worked there, and he said he doesn't live there. He can only see you there by appointment at his house, or, but you can go to the city. So, I asked around, I asked other people, and somebody said that for two years, he has not lived at his house. So, I was talking to other people, and I found that he lives in Orange, a nice house, by the way. But I'm considering that he, if I'm not, if I remember correctly, he won his seat by four votes only. And I asked Mr. Tinajero about this, and he said about this conspiracy, and they said, "What conspiracy? What do you mean?" And he says, "You're here for 12 years, you're here for 14 years now, and for two years, he has been voting for San Ana, thanks to Ana items. And I am a resident of San Ana, San Ana for Life and San Ana for the Afterlife, and I have proof of this. For two years, he's been voting for San Ana, he doesn't live in San Ana, and it's sad that it has come to this. The electorate has to know this. And if you swear to protect San Ana, but you don't live in San Ana, San Ana is for the santaneros. And if you want to live in Orange and go, just go to Orange and go with your family there, God bless you and God bless San Ana."
Before we go on, I'm going to allow Mayor Protem to respond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this is, this has been sort of a myth that's gone on for quite a while. And, you know, it's funny because it, there was a reporter here that used to work for a blog called The Voice of OC, and his name was Adam L. Mark. So, Adam followed a lead that somebody told him that, you know, "I don't live at my home." And so, Adam went to my home, and he was walking across my lawn and walking across the sidewalk, and he even went through my mail. And I remember telling him, you know, "Adam, that's a federal offense, you can't go through that." And it's funny because I pulled him in and I walked him in my house, and I brought him inside, and, you know, he saw my kids' dirty clothes, he saw all of our belongings there, and I said, "These aren't props." And I think the, you know, the mayor's been to my home, I think almost all the council members have been, have been there. You know, it's funny, I feel bad about people that come and speak at the council because, you know, some of them are misinformed, but, you know, it's good that they should, you know, voice those concerns. Anybody is welcome at my house, and I've had events there, and I've had people come over to visit. And so, you know, it, it's my law practice as well, so I do have clients that come and, you know, visit me there, and we consult there. But it's my kids' home, and so, and it's where I live. And, you know, I welcome anybody there because it's a home that we've had and we've lived in for, you know, over 10 years. And, you know, I've lived in and around the city much longer probably than, you know, the speaker who just spoke. So, it's, it's unfortunate, but again, I think myths are exactly that. Myths are meant, are intended to be addressed. This is campaign season, this is election season, so we get comments like that. It's unfortunate, there's probably something more to it. There's probably something that's inspired Mr. Vega to do this, he's probably got some ulterior motives. I have a feeling, you know, who those, who's prompting him to do that? But, you know, again, anybody is welcome to come visit me at any time and, and see where I live. And, and Mr. Mayor, I think you have been there on a number of occasions, and if.
You recently had an event for Councilman Martinez there. When was that?
Well, it's not just the events, but you've been there.
Oh, absolutely, and so have other council members.
So, you know, again, it's unfortunate, you know, that comments like that are made, but again, they shouldn't be unaddressed. And I think that, you know, I think, you know, taking the higher road on something like this, somebody said, "When people go low, let's go high." And that's the way I see it, that, you know, we want to keep a level of decorum. I do feel bad because people's, people are manipulated, people are misinformed. But again, the only thing that I think, you know, can inform folks is to, you know, see for themselves. And again, our home is, is a home that, you know, everybody is welcome to come visit.
Thank you for that. Carol Gerler, followed by Irma Macias, and after that, Thomas Gordon. Irma, come on up, because I think Carol went home.
I'm moving faster. Good evening, Honorable Council, Ms. City Attorney, Mr. Manager, City Manager. Well, I'm here today to talk about good things, like you like to hear the good stuff. You know what, me too. Unfortunately, with Comlink, we have been trying to attend many of the meetings that we have through the city with the 64 Neighborhood Associations here in San Ana. And it's sad, when I go or I attend to these meetings and people come to us, there is an individual here that comes sometimes, and he said, "My name is nobody." Well, I feel like that at these meetings because the issues that they have are so within their hearts. We're talking about the homeless going into their homes to take a shower, going into their houses to do the laundry when they're not there. Also, another issue that, almost three years ago, November 12, 2013, we did a walk and talk on the Piccolo Neighborhood Association, Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Polito, Roman Reyna, many of us went around, just to pinpoint that the issues, some of the issues that we have. I know that in Piccolo, we have two board members, Mr. David Benavides and Roman Reyna, that, I mean, how long will it take you to address those issues in your neighborhood or where, the world that you represent? I have addressed the need for parking, the need for people to have more quality of life, which is not what we have right now. We have seven days a week, the vendor and food trucks part. We have containers seven days a week, 24 hours a day in the streets. Two weeks ago, an incident by gun, an individual tried to remove another from the front of his house. It's not anymore the verbal abuse, the physical abuse, but now with guns, give me a break. They are expanded between Standard all the way to Fairview, Edinger, the first. We don't have this in the whole city. This is not a whole-city issue. And I, I don't know why it's so important for this vendor trucks to be in a residential zone when they are commercial. Some tell me that it is because they are providing products for the residents. It's not true. Just go by, they're nothing but unhealthy, unhealthy food. The foods, the trucks are filthy and disgusting. I really appreciate if you all can help me with this. This is not the first time. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Irma.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager, City Staff. I applaud Irma for coming down here once again to point out the issues of the quality of life in the cities. Anybody that's been over to Irma's neighborhood sees the impacts, how it affects the children, it affects the families, property values, which are ultimately how we pay our staff. So, sad. I'm coming down once again to implore you to finally do something about the syringes outside. It is a war zone, which you've acknowledged tonight. Item 25E, Agreement for Security Guard Services. You authorize the city manager, clerk of the council, to execute an agreement with G4S Secure Solutions to augment existing security services at City Hall Ross Annex. Total dollar amount, $1,014,024.52 because you have people with syringes, knives, weapons, mental issues, defecating, urinating, all over City Hall, all over San Ana. So, I've been privy to some emails that some of you have gotten. There are businesses that are leaving this city. You all have seen them, I know you have. I won't mention the names down on Second Street, but people were having lunch, and a person walked up, pulled down their pants, and squatted and decided to defecate right on our Second Street. And that person sent an email. People down there sent emails to you guys, and you guys saw those emails. Why aren't we fixing it? That person rubbed that feces all over the building and chased clients around. People plead with you every single day. The American Planning Association just acknowledged that our downtown, our civic center, was the economic engine of our city, and you guys are allowing it to be shat on. Handing out syringes, people assaulting people with weapons. You guys are getting security guards to the tune of $1 million to protect yourself and your staff, but the rest of the city out there has to face it alone. I implore you, stop the needle giveaway program immediately. You have the power to stop it. Please do so for the sake of the city, the citizens, the children, and the families.
All right. With that, we're going to go to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. We did have some news today to the points that had been mentioned recently about the importance of additional police officers and public safety. And so, I would like to report that yesterday, because of your leadership for the third year in a row, and I found out that about 15 cities in America have received cops grants three years in a row. There's 5,000 cities in the United States, so that's a tremendous achievement. With yesterday's award, the total is $3,750,000. So, we have 30 new officers. Our goal a few years ago was to hire 100. This will take us to 55. We still need to do more and hire more. We still need to do more and hire more but, Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, I especially want to thank Councilmember David Benavides for going to Washington DC and our Vice Mayor. We took several trips. Frankly, we didn't think we were gonna get a grant three years in a row but we did and we're so glad that we were aggressive, we were positive and we believed in ourselves and it, and it proved to, to help very much. So, thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so, while you were speaking and what, just before, I received a text message from a friend who lives in the city of Hemet and she was reading what I posted, which was the advisory on that and she said, "Well, Hemet has been applying and hasn't won once and why have we won three times?" So, I don't know if that was towards us or more towards her city staff over there but in any event, that's really great news and that shows that, you know, we compete well, we're strong in our advocacy and I think we have a good story to tell and I think we use those resources well. So, another 10 officers is always, you know, well-received news. So, I wanted to talk about something that was mentioned earlier. The American Planning Association just recognized San Ana as one of the great places in America and specifically the downtown and I think they've only done that designation to five neighborhoods in the country. And I want to especially thank our staff for the great work that they've done but I understand that a commissioner helped with this and I see a lot of nodding heads so I think it was my commissioner, Lisandro Orozco, who is a planner himself from, works in the city of Anaheim but I keep telling him he's gotta come work for us. But he lives in the Madison Park Neighborhood Association, he's a very bright guy but he took it upon himself to work with staff and to sort of co-submit this grant and, you know, I guess the American Planning Association is the association for planners. I mean, it's, it's, it, you know, oversees a lot of the activity, a lot of the planning that goes on in the country and so, to get recognized by them is a big deal. And so, those of us who are laypeople and don't know the industry of planning, that, you know, this is probably considered like the AMA or for attorneys, you know, the ABA. So, I want to thank our staff, I want to thank Lisandro because he's been, I think he's on my Arts and Plant, Arts and Culture Commission but he's been doing a great job there. And, you know, our downtown has been, been here since 1870 and so, for it to be recognized, it's also big. We have an event planned, Mr. City Manager, a special event for this whole thing. What's the date on that? I, I missed it. I think it's, it's coming up, right?
Julie? October 20th.
October 20th. So, that's a date that I want to make, make sure people know in the public. Come and join us for a great celebration. Do we know what time it is, Mr. Director? What?
Possibly six. They're still working.
Okay. We're still working through some of the, some of the logistics but it'll be October 20th, probably in the evening, right around six-ish. We're still working on a location. We have so many sites in the downtown that we're probably gonna, you know, we have many to choose from, that's a good problem to have. So, let's welcome everybody that day, it's gonna be a great celebration. I just wanted to thank staff today for the ribbon cutting that we had over at Memory Lane Park. And so, that's one more park in our system that we can be very proud of. It's a half acre right by the River Trail and, you know, again, it looked great right up against the, the Vista Del Rio units there that we cut the ribbon on a few years ago and that is for affordable housing for families with special needs. So, it's a really special place, it's a special site, two and a half acres of beautiful, beautiful terrain there. So, I just wanted to end by saying, you know, I want to thank all of our staff for doing a good job on everything that we've worked on today. You know, Public Works, the parks presentation on the additional space and the improvements done are very, just very impressive to hear. So, we appreciate your leadership, Mr. City Manager, on that and with that, I'll say goodnight.
Thank you and Councilor Mesko, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, too, want to end on a positive note. I really appreciate it. Had all those presentation on the parks, looking forward to all those renovations and the Sea Otter exhibit and the Ferris wheel, can't wait to see that happen but just want to wish everyone a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Reyna, please.
Yeah, I'll be brief as well but I do want to echo that. Of course, we live in a desert, be water-wise as much as humanly possible and for those that are curious what purple pipes are, that's what recycled water, that's what the pipe system that we utilize so when you see it on the side of the street and it's painted purple, that's the recyclable water that we're utilizing so just FYI for those. I too want to reach out to, to Helado and the crew, that his, his crew for putting together phenomenal projects. It looks like a $22 million investment into our infrastructure, into our, our services and our programs, to our young people, to keep them engaged in positive activities. It's absolutely incredible. It's a lot of money that's being invested. We're doing a lot of good work. At the same time, we have a lot of more, we have more work to be done, we have a lot more facilities that still need some of those assistance. For too long, we were putting deferred maintenance but we're moving in the right direction. So, Helado and your team, thanks so very much for doing so and keep on finding more dollars for that, some dollars for Catalina, too. At the very end, again, always shop Santa Ana as much as you possibly can. Halloween is coming up so make sure that you're safe and that you have a great celebration with your family in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor Benavides, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I too want to echo some of what my colleagues have mentioned with regard to the presentation, $22 million investing and, and I do, I wanted to call out that, that, that reference, that description because truly is an investment. It's an investment in our community, it's something that we will be able to look forward or look to, point to for many years to come. The playgrounds for our kids to enjoy, the, the parks, like the Memory Lane Park that was, that we opened up today, the Pacific Electric Park that, that is coming. So, any time that we direct funds that way, it is truly that, an, an investment. It's our young people participating in something that's positive, that's healthy, that's safe and it's, it's really ensuring for them, positive things for them to take, to be involved in so that they can see a positive future for themselves and for our community. So, with that, I just, I want to mention there are a number of parcels that the city holds right now. Sellable land that, that we could potentially market and sell or we could potentially look at creative ideas on ways to be able to turn those parcels into, again, an investment for future generations. We also have some, we're, we're blessed to be able to be looking at surplus funds versus being in the red from many, or a number, not too many actually, a number of years ago but through the diligent work of our staff, leadership, City Manager and your team, we've been able to, to see the realization of surplus funds, which we will be discussing in the next few, few months. Funds on how we're going to prioritize and direct those. We've talked a lot about public safety. Reality is that this investment in, in parks and park space and, and other types of benefits, capital improvements is something that, at the end of the day, is a public safety measure because again, our, our young people are connected and engaged and involved and something that, that's, that's positive and healthy. We also will be looking at CDBG funds as we look at the sale of some property along Bristol Street and how we're going to, again, invest those dollars. So, anything from, from public art to skate parks to public spaces, that all is, again, something that we'll be able to point to for, for many years in future generations. So, it's something that I just want to encourage staff to help us to identify the ways that other municipalities, how they're doing, there, there's been talks about micro farms we've, we've discussed here, but some of the members of community have brought up. So, number of creative ideas, looking at what other cities are doing and then not necessarily just having to follow other cities' leads, let's look at ways that we can lead, examples that we can creatively think outside the box, again, invest those dollars, point towards something positive, engage the community, the city coming together. It'd be wonderful for people to be able to see and look towards Santa Ana for how Santa Ana is leading in some of these efforts. So, great work by members of our staff, whether it be Public Works and, and some of those projects, improvements, parks and recreation and number of planning and building, so many great things that we're being able to celebrate. Amazing city, proud to be a part of it. With that, have a great night. And don't forget to invest also your dollars by shopping and creating business and, and supporting jobs here in the beautiful city of Santana. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And Councilor Reyna, I forgot to say, you know, about the, yeah, because every time I, if I'm out of town, I'm running low on gas, I come back in to fill up. Haven't run out yet but spend every dollar that you can here. And talking about here, I just want to direct some words towards this residency issue. I know Mayor Protem, Vince Sarmiento, lives here in the city. I've been at his house on numerous occasions. I know his kids, I know his wife, I know his mom, I knew his father, may he rest in peace. A wonderful family. You know, the kids, you know, they've come at times over to Cabrillo and they've played tennis with my kids over the years and, so, just for the record, I just want to, you know, state that clearly. Secondly, and maybe finally, unfortunately, we've had a lady, her name was Anne Gallegos. She passed away recently. She began her career here in the city in the Police Department, she was hired as a temporary employee back in 1998. She eventually went full-time as Senior Office Assistant until 1999 and then more recently she passed away and she is survived by her, you know, her family in particular, her husband, Art of 24 Years, who also works at Santa Police Department and two daughters, Melinda and Stephanie. So, I just would ask the, you know, city clerk if she would, you know, pass our condolences to the family and, you know, send flowers and, you know, please let them know that we adjourned tonight in her memory. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.